Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Bavacqua.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson. And Sage.
Here. Thank you. Now, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, everybody, and welcome back. This is our first city council meeting since the pandemic. So, it's great to be back, and I think it's kind of a sign that Rochester's coming back, and we're back. This is a hybrid meeting, so some people are allowed to be on Zoom call, but the city council members themselves have to be here. That is the state, that is the new state law. So, we have hybrid, but the council members need to be here. Also, our procedure for council members and/or people in the audience is if you're fully vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask. If you are not fully vaccinated, you are supposed to wear a mask. So, that is our policy. Okay. So, first, we're going to move on to public comment, scheduled and non-scheduled. Do we have public comment? Come on up, sir, and just identify yourself for the record. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm Tom Hardisty. I'm the Emergency Management Homeland Security Director for Oakland County. I just wanted to take a moment tonight to say a thank you for a number of things. Our role during, normally, is disaster planning, training, emergency preparedness. And then, when a disaster hits, it's coordination. Our staff is only a handful of people, so we help coordinate response. And we can't do that without good partners, partners within the county, partners within the cities, villages, and townships. And every time when an event happens, there's hundreds of people who have done a lot, but there's always a handful that stand out. And one of those is Chief Sleslick, who did not know that I'm going to be here tonight. I wanted to take a chance to thank him personally. His efforts early, he's part of the incident management team, but early on in helping plan for the coordination for the distribution of personal protective equipment, not only to first responders all around the county, but to hospitals, to long-term care, to senior centers all over the county, and working to help plan emergency response that was overwhelming some communities. And then, continuing to offer support with the fire station as a place for testing and vaccinations. He's, I've known him for a while, and he's always been that way, and we certainly appreciate it. And I wanted to take a chance to come here in person and say thank you, and also understand that this doesn't happen in a vacuum. My prior career was law enforcement. I know Chief Shettenhelm has operated the same way. You know, this happens with the support of the city administration and the city manager, the mayor, and the council, that you've cultivated a culture of doing what's right, not even just for your community, but for our whole community. So, I really just wanted to say, a chance to say thank you. Thank you for all of your support. Thank you for your staff and the assistance that they provided us and continue to provide us, and we appreciate having a great partnership with you. So, that was it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilmember Albrecht.
Before you leave, we'd like to thank you and everything that the county did during this pandemic and what you did to support not only the citizens of Rochester, but all of Oakland County. I know this was unprecedented for everybody, and you've probably learned a few tricks up your sleeve during that time, but thank you for your leadership with the county.
It certainly has, but we appreciate that, and really, what we've learned is what, like I said, what great partners we have.
Thank you for your service. Leanne, do we have anybody on the Zoom who wants to make a comment?
Brian is handling that.
Brian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm not seeing any public comment right now.
Thank you. So, next, we have the RARo Fiscal Year 2020 Audit Presentation. I think I saw Mr. Jewell up there. But Councilmember Albrecht, did you want to lead?
No, I spoke to Ron today. I gave an update at the city council meeting when we did the audit. So, I think we're in better hands with Ron and Joe and a member from our audit department.
Okay. Ron, take it away.
Sure, certainly. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity here today to present the audit findings for fiscal year 20 for RARo. RARo, in the next few minutes, you're going to get a brief synopsis from Alan Panter and probably a little more added input from Joe Schneider, the chief operating officer of RARo's treasurer, with reference to how the fiscal year had panned out. Overall, I think it was a very, very successful year despite the pandemic. We were faced with a lot of adversity throughout the year. We were not immune to this. Rec departments were devastated by this pandemic. But the one thing that RARo did do in particular, that I think that separated us from the most, is that we were steadfast in our programming and our services. We didn't skip a beat. We were actually very proactive with reference to programs and services. We felt that that was our need, our niche, to offer those communities, our community, those programs. And at that point in time, the community members made a decision, a conscious decision, whether they wanted to be part of the program or not. But we certainly did do just that, and I think that you're going to see and hear that has bared fruit for us. It was an aggressive plan. Thankfully, it worked, because obviously, there's the other end of the spectrum. If it didn't work, I'd have to have a lot of questions, but we kept our staff, for the most part, intact, and we offered those services. And it couldn't have happened if I didn't have tremendous support from Kate Tasky, Joe Schneider, and our administrative team, Dave Word, and of course, our board. Everything goes through our board. So, we're very happy with our board. It's very pro-recreation, and they understand fully what we're up against. So, with that said, I'd like to turn it over to both Joe and Alan for some brief input with regard to the fiscal year 2020.
Why don't you go first, Mr. Panter?
No problem, no problem. Well, good evening. My name is Alan Panter. I am a principal at Yo and Yo, EPA. I am a certified public accountant and a certified government financial manager. I have over 32 years of experience providing services to various municipalities, and I'm also the partner in charge of the audit for the city of Rochester Hills and also RARo. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight at your meeting. Appreciate that. So, we just wanted to give you an update on the annual audit. I'm not going to give you the full presentation that we gave to the RARo Board, but we want to give you a sense of some historical patterns and really how that plays into the numbers that you see currently being reported by RARo. So, and also, you know, of course, as Ron said, to really share some of that good news about the improved financial position that RARo finds itself in. So, in late April, we completed and issued the audit of RARo, and it was presented to their board in May. And of course, as you know, the audit of RARo is conducted as part of the audit for the city of Rochester Hills. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements as of December 31, 2020, and we also had no written audit comments or recommendations. So, that is a positive reflection, really, on everyone involved with the authority. Unmodified opinion in the audit and no comments, findings, recommendations, anything like that. So, everybody really did a great job of working with us during the audit. We really appreciate all the assistance that we got. So, tonight, as I said, I have a short presentation. I'll give you a few graphs, and I won't take up very much of your time. So, I'm gonna, do we have the slides that I provided, or should I share my screen or?
You have the ability to share your screen now?
Okay, good. Well, I'll go ahead and share my screen that I have here. And so, there's the first page, and I already covered that. I'm going to jump to the first graph. All right. So, this is a five-year comparison that shows trends in revenues, non-capital expenditures, capital expenditures, and fund balance. So, as you can see, the revenues and non-capital expenditures were trending higher each year until 2020, and you can see the revenues and expenditures both dropped significantly in 2020 due to the pandemic. The capital expenditures, that's a pretty, the third set of bars on the graph. The capital expenditures were very high in 2016 and 2017. There were some significant improvements made to the building over there at RARo, and so you can see that that happened in 2016 and 2017. What happened as a result of those capital expenditures, you can see in the fund balance area over there on the right-hand side, and it actually put RARo into a deficit for one year in 2017. So, there was a deficit, which is, of course, a violation of state law and certainly not a best fiscal practice that anyone would recommend, but what has happened since then, and you can see that the fund balance has gone from a deficit to a positive, to a larger positive, to a still larger positive. So, even in a global pandemic, RARo was able to add to its fund balance in 2020, which is quite a good achievement. The next graph is a breakdown of just the revenues. And again, this is the same format of the graph. We're showing you each type of revenue or the significant types of revenue. We have the member contributions, the charges for services, and everything else is the other. So, you can see that the member contributions are pretty steady. They go up a little bit every year, and so that there as well. But you can see what really happened in 2020 with the charges for services. So, you know, of course, because of the COVID shutdown of the building, a lot of the charges for services that the authority relies on did not happen this year. So, there was definitely a hit to the revenues that was experienced in 2020, as you can see from this graph. The other column, you can see it's a little bit higher. There was a little bit of federal money that was received in 2020 as well, and that's reflected in the other revenue. The last graph I have for you is, again, a five-year comparison of the various expenditure categories of the authority. So, you can see that administration was trending down, was already trending down through 2016, 17, 18, but it really dropped in 2020. You can see that adult activities, youth sport, and debt service really had no clear trend. But the ones where you could really see the change of 2020 are the dance programs and the other programs there. So, you can see that those were actually trending up until last year, and then they dropped significantly. And again, the capital expenditures are shown here, but we already talked about that. In any event, that is really what I came to discuss with you and to share with you in terms of the great news of RARo's improved financial condition. And if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Very good. Questions? Councilmember Albrecht.
Not a question, but as I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, with the fund balance was the first time we went over the $500,000 that we needed to maintain. So, and part of that was due to, and maybe Joe will talk to that when he comes on board, to some money we received from Oakland County.
Very good.
Absolutely. Mr. Panter, would you mind throwing on, sharing your screen again to the, I think, slide number two, revenues, expenditures, and fund balance?
Sure.
That'll kind of help illustrate as I go through a couple of comments.
Talk about that, sure.
Yeah, Councilperson Albrecht is completely correct. But even before I get to the CARES Act dollars, just kind of want to share a story of basically what RARo kind of went through. I remember when COVID really hit in, you know, March of last year. You know, I was worried about my city, city of Rochester Hills, obviously, and I'm sure you guys were worried about yourself, but also had to worry about RARo. And I remember getting on the phone, talking with Ron as this was all unfolding, and, you know, as we kind of spoke to a couple, back in 2017, RARo went from a negative fund balance to a little bit better, a little bit better. So, we were on our way back to getting to that $500,000 target that we really wanted to hit. And the reason that $500,000 is a big number is typically, RARo runs a $2.5 million operation, and RARo's fund balance policy calls for 20% fund balance be kept in reserve. So, 20% of $2.5 million is $500,000. So, we were getting our way back, but RARo still wasn't in great financial standing yet. You know, probably around 12%, 13% fund balance on our way, but not quite there yet. So, when COVID hit, we're like, oh, boy. You know, we don't have ample reserves just to dip into to get through this crisis. In my conversations with Ron, and it was really almost a bit of a challenge. Ron, we got to come up with a budget to break even at the end of this year, whatever we can do to break even. And it's really amazing that even without the CARES Act money that we were able successfully achieve, just taking that out, pretending you didn't get it, RARo would have ended the year with about a $3,000, you know, negative. But $3,000 out of $1.6 million, so almost broke even. So close to breaking even, I would say that's close enough. You've accomplished your job. So, really, kudos to Mr. Jewell, kudos to the entire RARo team for doing a terrific bang-up job of managing through the COVID crisis and did it spectacular fashion. Then, probably in the fall, I've learned of a program through the Oakland County kind of CARES Act, all the different CARES Act programs that Oakland County put out there, and this one I actually targeted, recreation centers. So, working with Ron and his staff, especially Mr. Dave Word over there, we're able to put together, let's see, how much was it? $176,000 worth of basically administrative and PPE costs, everything else we could figure and threw at it, and we're reimbursed in full. So, that was really the kicker that took us from roughly $360,000 up to the $540,000 that we're at now. So, it's really great news, because as we are starting to get back to normal, we would fully expect RARo's expenditures to get back up to normal, to run all of the various programs that they have doing. The nice thing is, we're already at the fund balance target that we want. As our RARo's expenditures start to grow, we don't have to grow that fund balance along with it. It's there. That's why we're actually at the RARo Board level and having kind of fun conversations for a change. Hey, let's, we got some aging, really old HVAC systems that need to be taken out. We have some resources to do some of these capital projects, reinvest in our buildings. So, you know, these are the conversations that we really like to have at a board meeting, not, you know, flying back to get our balance up there. We're there, and we're going to stay there. We've got a long-term financial plan. RARo does a three-year budget. We've got fund balance policies. We've got capital improvement plans, and we've got a plan. So, kudos to Mr. Jewell. He's been great to work with. I've loved working with this team. I'm so proud of what we've done, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Before I might add, just one more thing, if I could, just real quick. What Joe and Alan had touched on, a lot of this also stems from the fact that if supervisors who did the lion's share of this work to actually get out there and implement these programs that we wanted to have for our community, it begins and ends with our supervisors. So, we're super happy with the fact that our supervisors, you know, bought into this system, bought into this plan, and we're able to implement it. And so, hats off again to the administrative team, our board, Alan, Joe, and of course, our supervisors. The most important piece of that wheel there is our supervisors. So, thank you for the force we have.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I just, again, I think Joe did a good job of acknowledging Ron and David and the whole supervisory team there. They really did work together and made some sacrifices during the pandemic. I think Joe's being a little bit modest, because I remember when he brought this Oakland County grant to us. I mean, he sought that out. He put it together, then worked with Ron and David to really justify the costs. And I remember, it was yesterday, I said, "How sure are you, this Joe, of this $176,000?" And then, two weeks later, he called me, said, "I got the check in my hand. That's how sure I am." So, Joe did a great job, and again, thanks to Ron, David, and the administrative team there to put us in this position when you would least expect it to happen during a pandemic.
Further questions? All right. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Thank you, Ron, and everybody. Great, great job. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have approval of the minutes. Is consideration of the minutes the regular media of May 24, 2021?
Still moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Before I call a roll, Your Honor, was item 4A withdrawn?
Item 4A.
Senator McMorro.
Yes, I see her hand up.
I am here to give a report, Senator McMorro.
It's funny, the agenda I printed out doesn't have that on, so. Okay. Senator McMorro's office. Welcome.
I'll take the roll on the motion first.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
No.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Senator McMorro is welcome.
Hi. My name is Debbie Rosenman, and I am a constituent services assistant for Senator McMorro, and I'm here to give a report. Tuesday, June 1, Michigan residents saw new guidelines regarding capacity limits and restrictions in our state. And as of June 1, there will no longer be capacity limits outdoors. There will be no longer, will be capacity limits at residential gatherings. Indoor establishments are able to reach 50% capacity, and social gatherings will now be regarded by the venue, meaning the guidelines or the rules for any indoor wedding or conferences will be set by the establishment with which is who's hosting it. Face masks continue to be required for non-vaccinated individuals indoors. Beginning July 1, all broad epidemic orders will be lifted. As far as the budget update, budget bills were voted out of subcommittee, and they're working on negotiating a final budget with the governor's office. That's what we have for budget at this point. As far as resolutions, Senator McMorro earlier this month introduced Senate Resolution 57 to declare June as Gun Violence Awareness Month, and she also introduced Senate Resolution 58, calling on Congress to authorize the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at rest areas on interstate highways and to allow the charging station providers to charge a fee for public use of the charging stations installed at such rest areas. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel, questions? No, not today. How's the senator doing?
She's doing great. She's back full-time, but she had three meetings this morning and this afternoon, and is home tonight with her new little newborn.
Very good. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you. It's nice to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Okay, so we did the minutes. So, next is approval of the consent agenda. First is consideration of special event application from the Kiwanis Club of Rochester to hold the annual music in the park on Thursday from June 24 to June 29.
It ends July 29?
It's July 29. Thank you. Next is consideration of a special event application from the PSD to hold movies in the moonlight on Saturday from July 17 to August 7. Movies will be shown in the Farmer's Market Lot. Next is consideration of a special event application from the PSD to hold sidewalk sales on June 15 to July 17. Next is consideration of special event application from the PSD to hold dancing in the street on Friday, July 16 from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Event will be held on West Fourth Street between Maine and Walnut. And finally, is a review of the current 2021 special event calendar. It looks like all of our treasured summer events are coming back, so we're very happy for that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no old business or table items tonight. There are no public hearings on to legislative deliberation. First is consideration of proposed ordinance amendments to Section 1033 and 10132 of the Rochester City Code and proposed ordinance amendment to Section 2125 of the Rochester Zoning Code regarding swimming pool fences. Mr. City Manager?
Actually, our city attorney actually drafted this, so if we can maybe, for us here, turn back to the side and our attorney.
Welcome.
Good morning, or good afternoon, evening. Before you, for the first item of mine tonight, is a proposed ordinance for the pool fencing. Now, everyone probably believes, rightfully so, that people with in-ground pools have to have fences, four-foot fences. It came to the city's attention because someone applied for permit to have an in-ground pool without a fence, that there is actually an exception in one of the building codes that allows for not to have a barrier. They refer to them as barriers, not to have barriers if you have a powered cover that goes over it. Maybe you've seen, you can actually walk on them. And so, the building official looked at the code, and it's accurate, that that is an exception, and ended up having to approve that without the safety barriers. Now, so there was discussion with the administration and building official as to, okay, is this what we want in the city of Rochester? And so, the decision was to bring forth the city council a couple ordinance amendments. So, the code that's relevant today is part of the building codes. This one specifically is called the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. They all have their own little names. So, what this ordinance amendment does, there's actually a couple of them. The first one is to specifically identify this particular code as one being adopted. As the city council knows, the city adopts by reference all the building codes with their various names. That's Section 10-33. So, this ordinance amendment to that section adopts this one specifically by reference, except for the exception. So, what that means is that the city is adopting the code, but they did not want to have the exception for the powered safety covers to not have fencing or barriers. So, in other words, what we all thought would be, you have to have at least a four-foot fence, would also apply to pools that have the powered, the powered safety.
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry.
Senator McMorro is welcome.
Hi, my name is Debbie Rosenman, and I am a constituent services assistant for Senator McMorro, and I'm here to give a report. Tuesday, June 1, Michigan residents saw new guidelines regarding capacity limits and restrictions in our state. And as of June 1, there will no longer be capacity limits outdoors. There will be no longer, will be capacity limits at residential gatherings. Indoor establishments are able to reach 50% capacity, and social gatherings will now be regarded by the venue, meaning the guidelines or the rules for any indoor wedding or conferences will be set by the establishment with which is who's hosting it. Face masks continue to be required for non-vaccinated individuals indoors. Beginning July 1, all broad epidemic orders will be lifted. As far as the budget update, budget bills were voted out of subcommittee, and they're working on negotiating a final budget with the governor's office. That's what we have for budget at this point. As far as resolutions, Senator McMorro earlier this month introduced Senate Resolution 57 to declare June as Gun Violence Awareness Month, and she also introduced Senate Resolution 58, calling on Congress to authorize the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at rest areas on interstate highways, and to allow the charging station providers to charge a fee for public use of the charging stations installed at such rest areas. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel, questions? No, not today. How's the senator doing?
She's doing great. She's back full-time, but she had three meetings this morning and this afternoon, and is home tonight with her new little newborn.
Very good. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you. It's nice to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Okay, so we did the minutes, so next is approval of the consent agenda. First is consideration of a special event application from the Kiwanis Club of Rochester to hold the annual music in the park on Thursday from June 24 to June 29.
It ends July 29?
It's July 29, thank you. Next is consideration of a special event application from the PSD to hold movies in the moonlight on Saturday from July 17 to August 7. Movies will be shown in the farmer's market lot. Next is consideration of a special event application from the PSD to hold sidewalk sales on June 15 to July 17. Next is consideration of a special event application from the PSD to hold dancing in the street on Friday, July 16, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Event will be held on West Fourth Street between Maine and Walnut. And finally, is a review of the current 2021 special event calendar. It looks like all of our treasured summer events are coming back, so we're very happy for that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no old business or table items tonight. There are no public hearings on to legislative deliberation. First is consideration of proposed ordinance amendments to Section 1033 and 10132 of the Rochester City Code, and proposed ordinance amendment to Section 2125 of the Rochester Zoning Code regarding swimming pool fences. Mr. City Manager?
Actually, our city attorney actually drafted this, so if we can maybe, for us here, turn back to the side and Attorney Crot.
Welcome.
Good morning, or good afternoon, evening. Before you, for the first item of mine tonight, is a proposed ordinance for the pool fencing. Now, everyone probably believes, rightfully so, that people with in-ground pools have to have fences, four-foot fences. It came to the city's attention because someone applied for permit to have an in-ground pool without a fence, that there is actually an exception in one of the building codes that allows for not to have a barrier, they refer to them as barriers, not to have barriers, if you have a powered cover that goes over it. Maybe you've seen, you can actually walk on them. And so, the building official looked at the code, and it's accurate, that that is an exception, and ended up having to approve that without the safety barriers. Now, so there was discussion with the administration and building official as to, okay, is this what we want in the city of Rochester? And so, the decision was to bring forth the city council a couple ordinance amendments. So, the code that's relevant today is part of the building codes, which, this one specifically is called the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. They all have their own little names. So, what this ordinance amendment does, there's actually a couple of them. The first one is to specifically identify this particular code as one being adopted. As the city council knows, the city adopts by reference all the building codes with their various names. And that's Section 10-33. So, this ordinance amendment to that section adopts this one specifically by reference, except for the exception. So, what that means is that the city is adopting the code, but they did not want to have the exception for the powered safety covers to not have fencing or barriers. So, in other words, what we all thought would be, you have to have at least a four-foot fence, would also apply to pools that have the powered, the powered safety covers. Along with that, there's a Section 10-32 also, that's the swimming pool, specific swimming pool sections for building, and it indicates that properties with outdoor swimming pools shall have fencing slash barriers that meet all ordinance and code requirements, including the barrier requirements of the code, including those with powered safety covers, to make it abundantly clear that even if you have one, you need to have fencing or outdoor barriers. So, those are the first two that are in front of you. Those are regular city code sections that this, that the city council would need to adopt. The second, or the third one, is to Section 2128 of the zoning code, and that's, we actually have a provision for fence standards. So, we took a look at that and thought an adjustment should be made in case someone just happens to be looking at fencing instead of the building code sections, just so everyone who was going to look at all the different places they could is going to find that. So, the proposal for the fence standard zoning code is to have the same language, that properties with outdoor swimming pools, including those with powered safety covers, must meet and comply with all ordinance and state code requirements for fencing and barriers. And also, there's a, in that same section, there's an appeal provision for the zoning board of appeals for the various things that they may consider with fences. We wanted to present an exclusion from the ZBA being able to grant a variance from that requirement. So, if someone came in and said they want to appeal the decision, the planning commission or the building official, to have a fence for a swimming pool, because they have a safety cover, the zoning board would specifically not have the authority to grant a variance in that situation. So, if city council wishes to move forward with these grouping of ordinances, that particular one would need to go to planning commission first before action is taken. All zoning code provisions have to go to planning commission to have their public hearings. They don't actually make the decision on the ordinances, but they do their discussion, their public hearing, and they refer it back to city council, and then city council does its public hearing and decides from that point. So, normally, zoning code provisions start with planning commission, but we're, this would be a suggestion to send it to planning commission to consider and to take action on that one. As far as the other two go, the first two we mentioned, city council, if it wishes to proceed, could move for first reading and introduction tonight. I don't see a reason to wait until the planning commission, the zoning code ordinance amendment moves forward. We can, the city council can consider that when it goes through its process and comes back here in two or three months.
Very good, thank you. So, we have two ordinances on the table, and then also do, we want to send something back to the planning commission. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. City Attorney Crot, you said Section 2128, isn't it 2125?
Yes, if I said 2128, I misspoke.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, just for the public record, and then, secondly, I mean, when I read this, you know, child safety is so important, and who knows if the power cover is going to go on the pool or not, you know, each night, whereas a fence is much more protective. So, I would want to make a motion that the, to move the ordinance amendments to Section 1033 and 10132 for first reading and introduction.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht. Wouldn't those be referred to planning?
No, no.
No.
Section 2125 goes to planning.
2125.
These two we can act on tonight.
So, and then, in your motion, do you want to say that we'll send it to the planning commission?
Okay, and to direct administration to submit the zoning code ordinance to Section 2128 to the planning commission for the action recommended by City Attorney Crot.
Very good. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Bavacqua. Discussion, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I do have a question for Attorney Crot on this issue. I think that the safety of children and residents is, of course, the most important, but I'm just curious why in the international building and spa code, it's different, and it has this exception for the power covers, and it's okay for them. Why, why are we veering from the code that's already established, that we follow every other procedure within?
Sure, thank you. That's an excellent question. So, there are occasions where some of the codes, the city varies them. For instance, one that comes to mind is the fire code. The city has supplemented the fire code where it's felt it needs to be done. It's interesting, because the, this particular international swimming pool code has that exception. My guess is because that technology didn't exist before that code change. The building official did give me the previous, the Michigan residential code, which doesn't have that exception. So, I don't know the history of why they ended up changing it. My guess is because of technology, and my, and probably some lobbyists that said, you know, some lobbying groups from the builders' associations are saying, listen, we've made these safe, you know, they serve the purpose as a fencing. So, it's, it is city council's choice whether to, I guess, put that, you know, that fencing back in and not have that be an exception. So, it's a great question. I don't, we don't know the genesis of why that, that exception was put there, other than technology and, you know, changed.
And a follow-up, Mayor, if I may. Will this create any non-compliance in our community? And if there is a pool without a fence around it, could the city be held liable in any way?
So, the only one that, the city is not aware of any other pools that don't have fences, except the one that just came in. And because the code provision is what it is, they had to approve what was presented before the ordinance change. So, I would think that would be the only, I guess, non-conformity when it, if this does pass. And as far as liability, this is purely a private party, private residence situation. So, if someone, I mean, we're, the city is taking action to make things safer versus less safe, so I feel very confident about that. And even if we didn't take this step, I don't see liability from the city. There's nothing that prevents that, that property owner from putting a fence, they're, they are choosing or not choosing to put a fence in. So, I don't see that being a city issue at all.
Thank you, Attorney.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So, other municipalities have, it's where you have an above-ground pool over a certain height have to have a fencing as well. So, are we going to have that in here too, or is it just only in-ground pools?
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, so this, this is for any, any pool that, let me just make sure here. I believe that it applies to any pool that had that fencing requirement. If I, this one in particular happened to be an in-ground pool, but I think it does apply to above-ground as well. There's always the, you know, the locking latches and so forth. So, I believe that that's, that's not a distinction that the code makes.
Okay. Follow-up then. Okay, so, my only concern is, was brought up by Councilmember Harrison, as well as because it's already established in the code that, the other code, that we don't need that. So, it might be the only one, but it would definitely be non-conforming, you know. So, is it, is it necessary to actually implement that, knowing that that is what was approved federally already?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So, I would, I think the feeling from the administration and myself when we were speaking is, is if we stop the ability for additional people from moving, so that would, that's really the crux. We can't do anything about that particular one. But as far as, if city councils, from a policy perspective, wants to not have additional pool situations without fences, that's what this would take in. So, this is, this is a, you know, the international, you know, and the residential building codes for sure, but this is just a policy. Does the city want to have a bit more restrictive on pools with safety covers? That's really the only change in this, because every other pool that doesn't have a powered safety cover has to comply with all these barrier requirements as well.
No, and I understand that that's why, if with us putting this in there, that doesn't separate it, it actually puts them all together. I'm just thinking of long-term, someone else wants to put in an in-ground pool, and they put one of them on, then they actually have to put a fence on it, too.
That's correct.
You know, okay, so, but then we're always going to have one fence that, I mean, one pool that was able to not do that, just.
Correct.
I don't know. Would be nice to keep it all to where we don't end up with all these non-conformities in our community all the time.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration of ordinance to amend Chapter 54, utilities to add a new Division 12 water restrictions, introduction and first reading. Mr. City Manager, and this is what we had talked about before with the Shelby Township situation.
Yeah, and, thank you, Mayor. Just to give a little background for everybody, you know, online as well as in the audience, last year, we experienced, along with Shelby, I think it was five or six days, that we had an exceedance, so a high level of water usage during the month of July. Per the agreement through the Great Lakes Water Authority, any community that is getting their water and has that exceedance has to take certain actions. As a reminder, the city has two different water sources that provide our residents and businesses water. On the east side of our community is water from the Great Lakes Water Authority that's passed through Shelby, and so we have an agreement with Shelby, so we're not a direct customer currently of the Great Lakes Water Authority. And so, when they put some restrictions on Shelby, we weren't exactly sure initially if that complied, or if those needed to be in compliance with, with the city as well as Shelby. So, after talking with the Shelby Public Works Director, as well as he spoke with their township council, we determined that as long as the city was taking some proactive steps, such as a voluntary water restrictions, that monitoring of voluntary restrictions, and if we still had exceedance, that we could move to a mandatory level of restrictions, like what Shelby is actually doing now. So, Shelby, for the last six years, has actually had a voluntary restrictions for their water systems, and this current year, as of May 1, went to the mandatory. This is the odd and even days that most communities kind of in our general area have in place. So, what is before council here tonight? In our packet on, starts, well, my memo starts on page 58, and then the actual ordinance language starts on page 60, and it goes through 63, actually outlines the restrictions on a voluntary basis, and I'm recommending this, that this gets moved forward for first reading and introduction, and then at our next meeting for second reading and adoption. I'd be coordinating with our HOAs, along with our upcoming summer newsletter, to inform the residents of this voluntary restriction. It would be up to council if we wanted to extend this to the whole community, is this a voluntary, you know, restrictions? This is not a mandatory one. So, that would be another policy decision that council would, would want to consider. As it is right now, it's just the Great Lakes Water Authority, so our eastern side of our community, that we would need to do this to be in compliance.
So I'm okay with it being in there or being removed, if City Council is more comfortable with that portion.
I have a question for the City Manager. So in order for this, this is voluntary, for it to go mandatory, does it have to come back to City Council?
Oh, yes, yeah. So there would be a change, first, again, we would, tonight would just be introduction and, or first reading introduction, and then second reading and adoption, that would then put it into an actual ordinance. If we did need to make it mandatory to change the language to shall, we would come back to City Council probably a year from now, or maybe late spring. But yes, that action would have to be done at the City Council level.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht?
I think Councilmember Peterson was first.
Councilmember Peterson.
Two things, one, you know, this started out by saying it was voluntary, but you have the emergency restrictions, but the penalties go after the irrigation restrictions, so you're not being penalized if this is voluntary for that. So the penalties do not actually state that it's going to be for violating it during the emergency, because that's what those penalties are for, correct? During the emergency restrictions?
Actually, it would be for any of them, it refers to the division, which is the, all the Division 12 water restrictions, so.
But they're voluntary, so how would we?
Correct. So then that wouldn't be, then that wouldn't be a violation of an ordinance if it's voluntary, correct?
Right. So I just see that we have this all in here, even though it's all voluntary, with, these are not really restrictions unless you choose to make them a restriction for your own use, correct?
I would say the section 54-271, 272.
What, 74?
274, yeah. That was, 274 is the voluntary section, that's the only provision, that's our only section that has the voluntary watering restrictions to it.
Okay, but it doesn't actually say voluntary. It just says irrigation restrictions and limitations on water use. I just don't want us approving something that doesn't coincide with all the same, all the way throughout this whole ordinance. And, I mean, to me, it's, you know, I think it's been, what, 11 years I asked for mandatory, only because of trying to conserve water in our area, because this isn't the first time it's come up that we have the highest water usage of any municipality around us, so I think it's good legislation, I just would like it to be clear that it's either, you know, I don't know if it's voluntary, how you can put all together in this here for all the restrictions and the penalties, and how it would be policed then.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. City Attorney?
If council wishes for the caption for section 54-274, I could insert the word voluntary, so it would be voluntary irrigation restrictions, and then, and then.
I think you should do that.
Then that would be, I think, more clear, that that's a voluntary section.
That would be helpful, because it only states it down in C, that notwithstanding the voluntary nature of this, but, because the penalty doesn't go into that either, and the penalties, I would, I would think these penalties, as hefty as some of them go, are more in violation of during the emergency restrictions that we have, and I think those should be spelled out a little more clearly as well, for the future. So if we are on an emergency and someone continually does that, they could at least be fined, and that's what this is for. And that's what I believe this ordinance is written for, correct?
Yes, and I think if, in the penalty section, I could put in there, except for the provisions of section 54-274, that would exclude the voluntary section from the penalties provision, and to make that clear as well, I'm happy to do that.
Awesome. Good. Councilmember Albrecht?
Well, I'm going to piggyback on all three of my fellow councilmembers' comments. I also support Mayor Protem, that this applied to the Gliwa side of the city only, but I had the same reactions that Councilmember Harrison and Councilmember Peterson had. And I know, as the city attorney, it's difficult, because you have to have, one refers to the other, but as I was looking at these, I see 54-271 as the emergency restrictions. You have to have, keep that in there, because you reference it in 274. 272, you know, I know you took this from Shelby Township, I'm not sure we need this for what we're trying to do right now, when, you know, being on the Budget Committee with Mayor Protem Salvia, we talked about the voluntary restrictions, I'm all for it. With Councilmember Peterson, I think we need to do more for restricting water, but I would be more comfortable if 54-272 was removed, if you could. 54-274, to me, is the meat of this ordinance, and 54-275, I was going to remove that, but if you put in your language that you just stated, because, again, I had the same reaction as Councilmember Peterson, that this is voluntary, and then we have this whole section of $100 to $500 penalties in there. I think if we, if we get to a position next year where this has to become mandatory, then maybe we reintroduce that section. So that would be my, that would be my suggestions, City Attorney Crott.
I support that.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, did we have a motion?
No, second.
Support, second.
Okay, so, motion by Councilmember Albrecht?
No, there was.
By Mayor Protem, supported by Councilmember Harrison. Okay, so now, you had your discussion, was that good with the makers of the motion?
I look to City Attorney, there are really two different directions, correct?
So the way I look at where we are at the moment is that we would put, section 54-271 stays as is, section 2, or 52-272 would be deleted, 273 would then move up to 272's spot, and then the section 54-274, I would put in the caption that those are voluntary restrictions. And 275, of course, I'll move that up as well, would be an exception, except for that voluntary section in the penalties. The one thing that Councilmember Albrecht mentioned about the Gliwa side only, if these are voluntary, did City Council want it to apply to the city, or just Gliwa section?
So, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so, as the maker of the motion, the way City Manager presented it was, this was written for Gliwa water residents only.
No, this would be citywide, the way it's written is citywide.
Correct.
It's just prompted because we're a Gliwa customer.
So do you want, in your motion, citywide, or just Gliwa?
Gliwa only, and I support the recommendations made by Councilmember Albrecht.
And then, you support that, Councilmember Harrison?
I would suggest it be citywide, especially if they're voluntary restrictions to help preserve water for environmental reasons, but I'll support it either way.
Okay, so that's, so then, so let's put it this way, the motion on the table is for Gliwa only, so we can debate that. Councilmember Sage, did you have a?
Just one comment, add to something the City Manager Wing mentioned, regards to communication, you had referenced the HOAs, and, what was the other? Oh, the newsletter. So I'd like, I'd like to further that communication, because it is voluntary, but it's only effective if we truly spread the word, and so the local newspapers, The Post, and the lifestyles, we should have something in there, we should have it on the website, we should have it on everybody's water bill, well, unless it's Gliwa-only water bill, but on the water bill. So that would be my only suggestion.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. About taking out 272, though, I don't know if we should do that, because this isn't just about residents, it's about everybody in the community. So it's, I think that, you know, we don't know if somebody, a business or anybody, does stop paying their bill, or whatever, and violates that, that it should be able to be shut off. You know, if they're not, if we get stuck in that, I don't think we ever have, but I too think that this should be citywide. I won't vote for this, because it's only voluntary, I truly believe that after this many years, and knowing that we have the highest water use, this should be mandatory for the citywide. We have to start saving those resources that we have here, because they are very limited, and I don't want to, I don't want to just put in something that's just voluntary and put this into, into law, if it's just a voluntary action. To me, it's like, we should just sit here and talk about it, and put it in the newsletter that, hey, we just wish, instead of putting it on paper like this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Next, onto reports and regular business, a consideration request to waive tree removal fees. City Manager, I see we have a applicant in here today?
I believe so, and I think, yep, gentleman's here, and probably can come up, and my understanding is Brian, our deputy clerk, actually has a presentation that he can show, so it'd be on there, so I don't know if he wanted to speak first, yep, yep, yep.
And just give us your name and address for the record, so, welcome.
Yes, I'll pull up. Good evening, everyone, my name is Eric Caukason, I live on 1591 Stony Creek Drive, on the eastern side of the Rochester community. Actually, new resident of Rochester, only actually been in our house for not even a year yet, so, coming before you guys, because I'm bringing forward what I consider is a major safety issue for my property, my neighboring properties, and everyone living there around me, especially the children, we have quite a bit of children in the surrounding neighborhoods, surrounding houses around my own, and so, please go to the next slide. So what I'm trying to do here is to request an appeal from the city's tree ordinance, based on the safety issue. I have a total of 14, actually it's 15, one is not, is like, is a young tree, not a problem at all, but 14, what I see is problematic trees that are either, like, sick, they're leaning, and I see them as a pretty strong safety risk. And what my appeal is, is to pretty much appeal the replacement value that applies after three, going after more than three trees that the tree permit currently allows. So they're, pretty much, my property between lot lines are lined up with these Colorado spruce trees. They were planted by the original owner when the house was built, back in 1989, so they're 30-plus years old. Problem is that they, back in the day, planted very close and tight together to really get the privacy. However, once they've grown to the size they are now, basically, they got to an overplanting issue, they're crinched on each other, getting sick, and yeah, like, and kind of how they were planted on the grade, the size now is becoming a safety issue. Found out, like, after we moved in, we moved in in July of 2020, that two or three years ago, I haven't got the exact date straight, but never got that communicated from the previous owner, that two of these trees already fell, one into my, our, my current lot, and one into my neighbor's lot, and just pretty much missed those, like, both of our houses at that point. Between, like, the back lining up towards, say, like, the two back neighbors, they're all planted on the ridge, like, a small little ridge, and the big issue I see there was the spruce tree's shallow root system, doesn't take too much when they're starting to get this tall on some strong winds, that these can come and start falling down. And clearly, that's what probably happened two, three years ago, from my understanding, in a fall storm. I think there was more than other trees in our neighborhood, too, that went under the same fate. Like I mentioned, trees were overplanted, too tight, like, back then it was fine, when they were, like, at a decent size, but 30-year-old spruce trees, yeah, they have gone very, very tall, and they're swaying significantly, which is very worrisome every time I see some kind of wind event. A lot of them also have, like, the cytospora canker, which is, yeah, it's a fungus disease on them, and even more, so you can just kind of see in the pictures coming up, that the previous owners attempted, is my understanding, to adding supporting wires, either to make them try to get back into more of a straight-up growing pattern, or simply just support them to prevent them from falling. But all that has failed, because basically, I think, is 10 wires, and I think it's only one that's actually has some tension, and everything else, the trees actually pulled it out of the ground at this point. And what my selling, like, what I'm trying to achieve, because I still want trees and have, like, a nice vegetation in my backyard, is I have a plan to show you with, like, replanting of various vegetation of trees, like, our, like, arborvitae, I know there's a restriction on that, but I have some substitutes for that as well, maples and cherries and oak trees, really, to kind of get a nice spread throughout, and, but again, my plan is to not, again, replace exactly the same oak, because I don't want to end up in the same overplanting issue 10, 15 years from now, again. So something that makes more sense for my lot size, and something that can be beneficial for, like, from a long-term standpoint, but the key thing is, what I'm trying to, why I'm trying to do this for, because I actually love this tree and the privacy they provide, is the safety aspect for my kids and my property, and the neighbor properties. Go to the next slide, please. So this is kind of give a rough footprint of what my house looks like in my subdivision. If you notice, like, yeah, the black is obviously the house, and the gray is, like, my driveway up from the street. So my, say, like, lot line between my neighbor to my left, and then my wholesale, like, pretty much lot line on the back, is with these 14 spruce trees. There is another one, because my previous owner did replace with another spruce tree after the, like, last two fell down. My plan is to keep that one, because it's young, new, and fresh, but add more to it. And just after discussion with Nick Banda, Assistant City Manager, I believe, provided him with measurements, they're roughly 12 to 16 diameter and size and range, and that's pretty much what drove us to that, 20, roughly $20,000 in replacement value that I'm trying to appeal for. Next slide, please. So here, like, trying to highlight what I kind of see is issues, like, there's roughly four or five trees that have significantly leaning, and obviously, like, the one on the left, they tried to wire it up, and it's significantly, like, I think if, my prediction, if that one fell, I don't think it would land on my house, but those two, in the right pictures, I have a, if, really strong winds, I have a feeling those would actually come down on my house in a strong wind event. So, next slide, please. And so this is kind of highlight, I'm not sure how well you can see from the pictures, but they're all very much planted on a, not so very wide ridge, so the root system is very exposed, and I think that becomes the issue, where some of these have been falling down in the past, that they don't have enough basic grip down deep to really withstand when the winds get really strong, and you can see, like, they're very, quite tall at this point. Next slide, please. And here's some more highlighting, like, the support wiring up, if you have, if you could go back to that one, if you don't mind? Yeah, some, yeah, like, you can kind of see how, like, the wires are basically just slack at this point, like, from the tree, like, the tree removal team I talked to to even get a quote, they pretty much said, even if you, the previous owner tried to do something like this, if a strong wind event happened, these wires would actually not do really anything. They're more for show than anything, so, but, next slide, please. And this is kind of what I see, and some of them are first, like, that, because I kind of wanted to keep at least some, because, like I said, they do provide good pri, some good privacy, but a lot of them also, they have, it's like, the canker, like, this fungus, is even, from the arborvitae that I talked to was Wendell, and I think he's located in Rochester Hills. He based, his comment was, like, at this point, like, you're better off of, like, taking down and starting fresh, because they've, they've been standing too tight, and they haven't got, they haven't had a fair shot, like, for a while. These have been healthy, they, they should have cleared out probably like 10 years ago, is what I was told. Next slide, please. So like, the main risk I see is, like, the harm to individuals, right? I have two kids of my own, two under two, one just, like, literally born just two months ago, but my neighbors all have, like, two kids on one, another kid on one, and grandkids that come and visit in the other neighboring ones all the time, so that's the main one I see, and then obviously, to our properties, right? I guess in the last event, three years ago, like, it was lucky nothing happened at that point, but based on the picture, I think you guys can all agree and see that, in the next event, if one of those, well, they would literally probably crash down, or ride into our living room. Next slide, please. And obviously, like, did my due diligence, discussed this, obviously, making sure I had an agreement with all my neighbors in my subdivision, making sure I don't just run people over, and making sure, like, this, I say, we like the trees, and a lot of them like ours as well, and my plan is to replant, but there, we're all in agreement, like, safety and, like, in this situation comes first. Next slide, please. And another benefit I see, like, I'd rather put, like, the cost-benefit of removing more at once, so I can put, say, like, more value back into my own property. at once, so I can put, say, like, more value back into my own property again with the cleaning up, basically, like, doing, uh, removing everything at once, and start from, say, like, a, almost like a clean canvas, almost, basically halves, like, the removal cost versus doing, like, two, three trees, trees every year for, say, like, the next four or five years. Next slide, please. Here's, like, a rough, rough idea of my replant. Like I said, I don't, this is not written in stone. I want to get, like, a more variety of replant, not just put in, like, fourteen new spruces, and, like, say, call it good with that. I'd rather do, like, a nice mix of, like, maple trees and cherry trees, mix it in with, like, some more shrubs and bushes, like, a cherry bush, magnolia bush. I know, like, there's, yeah, some restrictions about, like, arborvitae, and I am more than open to, like, mix that in with, like, so, shad blow, or, for example, like, column oak trees, to, like, get privacy back up and going. But again, my key is to get something that I feel like is long-term benefit for my entire community, like, nice looking for my entire community, and something, obviously, the most important, that is safe for my, my family and my community. And like I said, rough timing, kind of going back and forth with this in, like, the last couple few months now, but my plan is, if I get this done here, like, in the late summer, my plan was to start doing, like, the first plant in the fall, and do some in the spring, because some of them is pretty much fall-spring dependent, when is the ideal. Next slide, please. And like I said, benefit of the replacement is, yeah, we get nice, new, healthy, like, trees and shrub into, like, in the appropriate amount in this lot, that it doesn't get overplanted again. And obviously, the improved safety is, like, really what I'm doing, like, this for in the whole first place. And something that's better suited for, like, my lot, and especially my grade with, like, that, that little ridge that I have between, like, the lots. And then, just, I think the benefit for our entire HOA, which I have Rob here to support me for, is, it's just going to increase our property value, I think it's, overall, after seeing these trees, like, I think it would just increase and make the whole neighborhood nicer looking.
That may add. I'm Rob Whaley, and I'm with the Stony Point Housing Association.
You gotta go.
Yeah, my name's Rob Whaley, I'm with the Stony Point Housing Association, Nancy knows me. We are in unanimous support of Eric's plan, and, you know, we want our, we love our trees, we want our community to be beautiful, and we support him, we've, you know, we've met with Nick, and we just like to move forward with our plan. It's a very cost-effective, I think, solution, and improve the safety situation immediately. We're all concerned about these trees, and you've seen the leaning trees, the diseased trees, and we want to address the problem, be proactive, and get going immediately. So we appreciate you hearing us, and appreciate your support.
Okay. Go to the next slide, I think this might be the end, I believe. So, yeah, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Any questions, feel free.
The applicant council member, Bavakwa.
Yeah, Eric, thanks for your presentation, very helpful. Have you gotten a quote for the cost of your replacement plan?
I was planning to do, I honestly, like, most of it, like, by myself, but I have, like, for the few of the trees, it was going to be roughly about, like, five hundred, two thousand a tree, but the smaller shrubs, I was going to do, like, mainly myself, was the plan.
I was just curious to see what the, maybe the delta would be between the $20,000 that the book says, and what you would actually have to put in on your own, anyway. Because it might, it might be close, so, depending if you had someone else do it, especially.
Yeah, no, my plan, like, I have, like, a family member who is in landscaping, so I was kind of, kind of mostly utilize him and that, and, like, do mostly my, like, plan to do the work myself, because, yeah, to kind of keep cost and money, like, cost down, basically.
I guess I'd be curious, then, if, if you, if you got a real quote from, you know, a landscape company, you might actually be meeting the criteria by hitting that, hitting that plan. It may be a $20,000 plan, from a commercial perspective.
Yeah, but like, that's one of the things I'm, I'm also trying to, or, because, yeah, it's.
No, I understand, but just from, from a standpoint of, of us making a determination, it's like, you're probably already putting $20,000 worth of replacement value in, and you're meeting the, the criteria of our ordinance, so, that's all I got, thanks.
Council, thank, thank you for that presentation. Also, council member Peterson.
Yes, well, I would like to make a motion to approve waiving the tree removal fees, because I believe that they were never maintained by previous owners, okay? Definitely, they are dead trees, they are a hazard to that area and the home and the structure and things like that, ends up being more of an issue moving forward, and I can, you know, when you have a whole entire association backing you on regarding the safety, I think it's important that we look at that and think about that moving forward. And he did present an awesome plan of what he wants to do, and sometimes I think that the ordinance that we currently have does not go into, into the exceptions that should be there in the future for situations like this here. And I think in fairness, for somebody to bring forth a plan that actually beautifies the neighborhood and has the support of an association, I think that it would be in the best interest of that resident and the safety of the people to waive those fees, so he can move forward getting that done and put the money forth in a better way. Thank you.
So there's a motion by council member Peterson, their support. Support by council member Bavakwa, discussion, council member Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate the, the presentation, Eric, and, and I, I too can support this. My question, though, to council is, we have a, a rough plan of what this resident would do. What if he doesn't comply to that? What is our remedy? We've just, we've just waived $20,000 worth of value, if you will, that is existing in an ordinance. What is our remedy, then, if, if nothing comes to plan?
Council member Albrecht.
No, I, I'm going to wait my turn, I wasn't answering that, I was, I wanted to comment on the motion.
Okay, so, Blaine, do you want to answer that question, or?
You would need to put, or the council would need to put conditions, that's the only way that you would.
Council member Peterson.
Yeah, so, in regards to that, though, I believe that, is it really cost, or, you know, new trees being planted actually benefit the community more than dead trees dying with that, and I don't think that if you have the support of your HOA, they're the ones who, they have to answer to there. I don't know why we would be policing that part of that, because the association is responsible for what they do in that development.
Council member Albrecht.
I think Mayor Protem was next, so.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, Sylvia.
Thank you. I was just going to kind of tag on to that point, council member Sage, and just suggest in the motion, maybe to the maker of the motion, that Eric be required to submit the landscaping plan to the city forester for approval, just like a developer would, that be submitted for approval, so that we get a real professional landscaped approach, you know, you're trying to do the right thing for the neighborhood and your family, and then that would give us some teeth to follow up, that that get implemented.
Council member Peterson, is that, is it okay with the mo?
No, I'd like to explain why, thank you. Because we don't do that for everybody, for any tree that's been taken down, or any tree that goes up on any other private residence of, when you can take down three or more. So I don't think that that would be starting to really, really being over-government on something that is being acknowledged by your HOA already.
Council member Bavakwa, are you?
Uh, no, I, I, I would, I would lean towards a revision to the motion that would include some sort of requirement for compliance of the, of the plan. I mean, just submitting it doesn't even really do it, if you're going to, you know, if you're going to make the revision, it's almost like we might as well do the, the full requirement for compliance.
So council member Peterson, do you, so you want to stay with your original motion?
I do, I do.
Okay, so then, so are you withdrawing your support?
No, I'll support the motion as it stands, that we can discuss the concept of compliance, I just think it was an option on this, so.
Council member Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So have we, in any of these, uh, oh, that's right, you were, go, please, please.
Go ahead, I, I'll wait again.
So have we waived any, in any of these opportunities, have we completely waived any of the, the value, the replacement value? Has any, any one of these judgments, have we ever done that?
They just paid a fi, fine, that was it.
Correct.
That was different.
So, no, my point being, they paid a fine, so we didn't make them submit a, a plan, right? So here, we're going to waive the fees completely with no plan.
Right.
So that, that's the part that I just need to feel more comfortable about.
These were not cut down yet.
No.
So he came before us before doing so, to where that money, those were only, those people paid those, because they either were cut down or something else in the future, and anyone else could go ahead and do that. Plus, I have to say that they just purchased the home in just July a year ago, okay? Those were not their trees, those were never maintained by anybody, and now we're going to penalize somebody for having bad trees on a property that have been there for a very long time, that nobody ever addressed. I don't think that's fair to then make somebody pay $20,000 to do that.
Maybe I'll just follow up. Thank you, just to follow up with that, is it that much of an overreach just to ask for a plan? I'm willing to waive the fees.
But he did give a plan.
And I'd like him to submit a plan to the city. Let Nick look at it. I mean, obviously, he's talked to the, the city arborist, got some direction to that point.
Mayor Protem, uh, council member Albrecht first, right?
Tried.
I was so nice telling where I was in line, then I lost my place in line, so, I spent a lot of time on this proposal, and Eric, thank you for coming forward as the acting chair of the Tree Committee, I'm very passionate about this, but I don't want to be the tree police here. I, if I was in your same position, I would have done a similar PowerPoint, and you've got the, you know, the support of your HOA, and you talk to your neighbors, you've done all the right things, you've done all the right things. I can't support the motion as it stands right now, I would vote no on the mo, vote no on the motion that's on the floor, however, however, I, I, I do believe, we have a forester on our city council, you work with a, as the council member Bavakwa said, go to, Wendell, I think you're dealing with, to say, hey, what would it cost to do this, and, 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 and present a plan and a timing for us, just, I guess, just tighten this up a bit. I know you did this on a PowerPoint with your little circles and ovals and everything else like that, so I would support the motion if there was a plan in place to say, okay, here's what I'm going to do, I, I would agree with waiving the fee, I don't want to make money for the Tree Committee here, I just would like to see a, a little more specific plan from a, a landscape person, working with Nick, Nick will work with you on that, say, hey, instead of the arborvitae, why don't you try this, or, the maple might not work there, or something else like that, so, that's, that's what I would ask of you, to, you know, to, to, and I would, I would support that motion if the motion was, you know, modified to say, we will, we will waive the fee if there's a, a plan in place, a landscaping plan, that we, that our assistant city manager, Nick Banda, looks at, to, to make sure it fits what we need and the timing we're looking at.
Council member Peterson.
No, I'd like to hear from the HOA first, please.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So we've been working with Nick Bandy all along, and he's reviewed the slide deck, actually, before we presented it this evening, so, why don't you let us work with Nick, we'll get her done, it'll look beautiful, you don't have anything to worry about.
Mayor Protem, Sylvia, then.
Yeah, so I was just going to ask Eric, in the event that the maker of the motion won't amend the motion, can you give us your word that you will work with the forester, Nick Banda, and just make it a great plan for, for your, for your, that honors the intent of our ordinance, which is preserve the tree canopy and beautify your lot.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, as long as it's also, like, I'm not going to be planting fifteen-feet tree at this, like, like, there, so, that's what I mean, I'm going to be doing, like, I'm pretty much going to be planning, doing probably, like, tree a weekend kind of thing, dig a hole and literally do it myself, because I'm forcing, like, 20,000, like, roughly, like, then that range in landscaping, with two new, like, two kids under two, like, unfortunately, I prioritize my money elsewhere, so I'm trying to do my best, is kind of keep the cost down, so if that means me digging a hole for a whole weekend, I'm okay with that, as long as the city would be okay with that also, that it's not, has to be professionally done by a company, then I'm, I fully support.
Council member Albrecht.
I, I, I support Mayor Protem's suggestion. Again, I'm not suggesting that Wendell comes in and does the trees, I would try to do the same thing.
Removal, yes.
But myself, I just want to see something a little, you know, a little more professional than, you know, the one slide, which just had the ovals and the circles there, that Nick looks at, you guys agree, you, the HOA signs off on it, if the intent's there, you get this done in the fall for the ones you can plant in the fall, and spring for the ones you can plant in the spring, everybody wins here, you know, so, that, that's what I would support, and, and, and if, if that's your intent, which, based on the work you put into here, I don't, I don't expect anything but that from you and, and the HOA, I, I would support this 100%.
So my question, then, to council, is, are we going to do this for everybody, then? Because I don't want to, I don't think it's fair if we're not going to make the same rules for everybody coming before us, because we've never done that before. We've never asked for, you know, them to give us a plan outside of that, whether Nick, our city forester, is here or not, to do that. I mean, I don't think that that's where we have to, if we're going to make this decision moving forward, and yes, and I appreciate everyone's feedback and thoughts, too, because I understand that, but I don't want to set in a precedent with one person who is here merely just to let us know that they have some of the worst trees on their property that are truly a hazard and could actually go, if we got a bad storm, could even take out their house, okay? So, what do you want?
Council member Harrison.
Thank you for the presentation, Eric, it was very well done, I understand your concerns, you know, and I understand the frustration of having to invest back in the community in order to cut down these trees, but I think that's the idea of this ordinance and these fees, is that you want to beautify your property, and if the value of the trees, Nick's, Nick comes back and says is 20,000, and you're not able to do that realistically, to plant $20,000 worth of trees on your property, the idea is that they get planted other places in the community to help continue beautifying Rochester. That's why we have this ordinance, that's why we ask for those fees when trees are cut down, and arborvitae, it's my understanding, is not what we want to see to preserve our tree canopy, so I don't feel 100% comfortable with this.
You have one more, another one, we're coming up to the, up to the.
Uh, no, I'm not.
No, I'm sorry, they backed the homeowner up, you have to, you need to come up to the.
Wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
Just another way to think about this, too, so, the trees, the, the fourteen or so trees, they border Eric's neighbor's property, okay? And it's hard to say the lot line, a couple of the trees may be on the neighbor's lot line, we're not certain, so the neighbors all agree, so if each neighbor said, I want three trees removed, they could do that, so that would be three trees for each of his three neighbors, that's nine, plus Eric's three is 12 trees per the ordinance, you know, that would be okay, and they're just literally feet, some of them may be on a neighbor's yard, we're not sure about the lot lines, but it's feet, okay? So if there was feet this way and feet that way, four neighbors could come together, and we could use the ordinance and remove 12 trees. Another thing, in the ordinance, the city manager has the authority to ask a neighbor, hey, your trees are unsafe for the neighborhood, they're diseased, we would like you to remove those trees, and you could use the ordinance to remove those. So in this situation, all of that kind of comes into play, so we could say, hey, the city manager, I see those trees are unsafe, Eric, please remove those trees per your ordinance, the other neighbor saying, hey, these trees are really on my property, I want those three gone, so it could, you could see it that way as well, and, and with the ordinance, there would be no fees, it'd just be neighbors saying, I want to remove my three trees.
Mm-hmm.
City manager saying, those trees are unsafe, please, Eric, remove those trees. So that's another way to look at it, too. Thank you.
Council member Sage, and then.
Oh, go ahead.
Council member Harrison.
May I ask city manager Wayne, just for clarification, is our city forester recommending these trees be taken down?
Uh, actually, we can, I was going to say, we can actually ask Nick, so Nick, if you want to.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so, um, not, not all of them, no, there's some that are dangerous, obviously, but, and, they can argue about property, et cetera, but I, I am of the ilk of, Councilwoman Harrison just said, there's a reason that we have replacement value, is to protect the canopy. I don't have a problem with the trees coming down, but they, the value should be replaced. At even $350 a tree times fourteen, that's only $5,000 for the trees. Magnolia bush and a service berry don't cost $350, so, you want to get substantial reinvestment in the canopy, $5,000 is not going to do it when you take down 14. Not the point of taking them down, I get it, it's the replacement. And Councilwoman Peterson's comment, we have had this situation before, no one, no one has come and asked for a waiver on the replacement value. I had. I've had 50 people over the last 12 years take down more than three, and they've always replaced them, the value on their own property, or put money in the tree. Like, a different story than the people that took them down illegally. I appreciate Eric coming forward and working with me on this, but there's two different things there. So any, Mr. Zof was a good example. He took down, before he moved, a lot of trees that were dead and died, obvious pooses around his property, but we came back with a plant. So administratively, we work on a plan, same thing I could do with Eric. But I would prefer to have a plan required, that they're not a bunch of bushes and not a bunch of arborvities, and count that as replacement. Or you just waive the fee totally, and then whatever he does, he does. So you really can't handle both ways.
Thank you, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. So Eric, in the plan, the, that you showed us on the one slide, I don't know if we can reference it, we're going to eliminate 14 trees, but we're going to replace it with three or four trees, right?
No.
Roughly?
No.
Everything else is a bush?
But I was okay with also, like I mentioned, if like arborvities is something that is pretty much, pretty much not made this happen, I'm more than okay, for example, switching that into like column oaks, that actually makes it into trees. So, like I said, but like, my goal again is not to get, take 14 out, put 14 back in.
Agreed.
Because then I'm ending up with an overplanting. This, like I said, like, to me, like, this has been a headache of mine to just be like, I want to deal with the safety issue. And I feel like the deeper in I go, I feel like I'm ending up on a wall, like, there's no way out almost, without me spending a lot of money, which I feel is handling a safety issue. So my goal is always to, yeah, I want like the vegetation back. I want trees, because obviously, we love the privacy of our property. But to like a more appropriate extent of than having like a full 15 trees.
Understood. But would you be willing to submit a plan and work with Nick?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Like, within, like, like I said, as long as it stays within, like I said, like, I'm not, when the replacement, going to be able to get a $20,000 replacement, because like, like Nick said, new trees, like what I'm planning to get, like something rooted and properly grown in my property is never going to add up to that value. And that's, like I said, why I'm trying to do this myself, so keep costs down. And like I said, like, I think the overall goal, right, is to get, to get trees back. Like, I don't want to end up in a situation of trees becoming this much of a headache for myself, where I'm taking three down every year, because then, to be honest, at that point, if I'm, it ends up being that route to like keep costs down, so I'm going to remove what I'm seeing as the highest risk ones. Every year, three of them, and never, honestly, probably don't want to replant trees ever again, because if it becomes this much of a headache, where I feel like it's just going to cause me trouble down the road again. That's kind of how I'm thinking about it, because I'm trying to come up with a reasonable plan.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Again, I would go back to the maker of the motion. I think we have a, a good compromise on the table where, and we've heard from our forester, where I would support Eric working with Nick on a plan, waive the, the tree, the tree penalty, the $20,000, so that Eric and the HOA, with the HOA's support and Nick's support, we have a, a plan. And I would vote yes on that, on that motion, if, if the motion maker would make that change. If not, then I would have to vote no, and then maybe make another motion.
So Councilmember Peterson, it's up to you.
Yeah, so, that's fine. First, I would like to know, how is that going to affect the homeowner with this plan that is going to be approved by Nick? So what exactly, I mean, is he going, is it going to be that it has to be 20,000? Or does it just have to be, I want, I want it stated that it doesn't have to be that?
Councilmember Peterson, if I may, we've already, I think we've, conceptually, most people around here have agreed to waive the, the fee.
No, but the plan.
No, no, I'm getting to that, please. I'm not looking for Nick to come up with $20,000 worth of trees for Eric to, to submit. I just want a plan that, you know, doesn't have a bunch of arborvities in here, that has a little more balance with his experience. And if Eric goes on himself and plants them himself, or brings his cousin over to plant them, I'm fine with him managing the cost also. I just, I just want, Nick, we've got a forester on our staff.
And he has to do that.
Yep.
Right. So.
That's fine, I will do that for the homeowner.
Okay, so then, so then the motion is, we waive the fee, but then you have to submit something to Nick Banda that Nick will approve, and then also then you have to commit that you're going to do that.
Or mayor, you said he has to work with, I would like Nick and him to work jointly together, you know, instead of Eric submitting a plan to Nick. Maybe Nick has some ideas that they can make the plan jointly together. That, that's all.
That's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Bavacwa, you good?
Yeah, I'm okay with that amendment. I also had a question just regarding process. I thought that the point of putting together the Tree Subcommittee was so that we could have these discussions and come to these resolutions at a subcommittee, so that we don't have to go through this in a full meeting. And all of this could have been done and achieved, and it may need to even had to come to council. Or if it did come to council, it would have been buttoned up. And all the questions would have been asked and answered, and, and, and council could have been, you know, giving a final okay on it. So I don't know why this, this came to council and not to.
Mr. City Manager, didn't you say this didn't fit into that category?
Right.
That's correct, maybe the attorney, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy that, I believe that was probably in one of the iterations, but when it came down to, I believe that the homeowners associations were quite adamant about the limitation of power given to the Tree Subcommittee. So the, the Tree Subcommittee duties are clearly listed in the ordinance, and that's not one of them, is, is they wanted the appeal, because it's, it's waiving, and they're not fines, they're, they're replacement costs, so, yeah, city, the Tree Subcommittee wasn't tasked with waiving fees.
Yep. My, no, my point is, is that the discussion could happen at the Tree Subcommittee level. If it had to go to the council for approval, we could work through all the issues first, instead of trying to do it on the fly at a council meeting, which doesn't make a lot of sense. And then the council would have the final say in saying, yeah, we, we agree with what the subcommittee has come up with and the applicant has come up with as a resolution to this, instead of doing this. That's, that's what I wanted the Tree Subcommittee to, to be.
I think that's what we all wanted the Subcommittee to do, right. No, that's a great point.
Yeah.
And, and this, this shows exactly why.
Right.
Yeah, because we all had discussion, mayor. And that's why the Tree Subcommittee and the other committees don't really work well, because we don't get good, healthy discussion for the public. And I think it's important, because I can tell you that, no, we're not just going to push things through, because I'm going to be adamant about making sure that we don't set a precedent with certain people and not everybody else. And we've never once seen a plan for anybody else who had trees taken down. Thank you.
Councilmember Bavacwa.
Yeah, and I guess my point is, is that this does have implications like that, that you're talking about, making a decision on the fly that could cause problems in the future. We're doing it because the applicant's here and he's looking for a resolution, and we're trying to find one, and we're, again, doing it probably far too quickly and not really taking the time to consider the ramifications. And that, at a subcommittee level, can be considered and discussed and moved forward much more cognitively. And we're not going to do that here tonight. We're going to, we're going to make a decision, and there's probably implications for it. And I don't think that's right.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I would have preferred this come to the Tree Subcommittee myself. I mean, I, I found out about it when all of us got our packets on Thursday. So this, this would have been a better discussion at the Tree Subcommittee. We could have talked to Eric and the HOA and came up with options A, B, C, but I have to defer to the city manager and city attorney, who said, we didn't have that in our purview. To me, having a discussion on the Tree Subcommittee would have gotten us, saved us about 45 minutes of, of today's city council meeting, where we could have come with recommendations, and then discuss those recommendations instead of, you know, what we've done, whatever we've done over the last hour.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to ask, would this be tabled until we see the new plan?
We have a motion on the floor.
Right.
A motion to table would supersede that, yeah.
May I make, okay.
So a motion, thank you.
May I make a motion to table this until we see a new plan?
Motion by Councilmember Harrison to table this, is your support?
I'll support it. Can I support a motion to table or a motion Eric?
Of course you can, of course you can. Okay, so there's a motion to table until the plan is submitted. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Sylvia.
No.
Albrecht.
No.
Bavacwa.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
So the motion passes to table until the plan is, you get together with, with Nick, and then hopefully you can get that and bring that right back. I mean, I think the council clearly states that they want to waive this and make this happen for you. Okay? So thank you for coming in.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't know if this is helpful or not, but the Tree Subcommittee duties do provide that the subcommittee may consider and provide advisory opinions and assistance on matters referred to it by a city council or the city manager regarding trees. So I throw that out there if, if that's, if the applicant or our city council wishes to go to the subcommittee to have an advisory discussion, that's an option.
Yeah, that's a great point. Councilmember Rock, I don't know if you want to reach out to Eric, if you want.
I think we heard everything that he's, I think it's, I think we're trying to redo history now at this time. I would have rather have voted on this tonight, but the motion to, to table has been, has been made. I assume, I'm hoping that Eric and Nick will come to us at the next meeting, so he can get this done this summer, so.
As the trees don't fall in the house.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So was the only reason, and just reading through the, the city manager's comments to, to bring this before us, the committee does not have the authority under the scope of the duties to waive the replacement value, only city council may do that. Was that why it was never referred to the Tree Committee?
Good on Mr. City Manager.
Checking with this, with the attorney, yes. The council could refer back to the committee, but the ordinance isn't written that way. You'd have, you'd have to say, send it to the committee for discussion. I agree, I think that's a smart thing to do, but the ordinance wasn't written that way because of the pressure from the association, they didn't want that committee to have power, but discussion is not power, so.
We wouldn't have had that power, we would have only listened and then brought something to city council. So I, I don't think, I don't think this, the, the letter that we received with our packet addresses what we should have done. We should have come to the Tree Committee, we should have vetted what Eric and the HOA had talked about, and come with a recommendation here, and we would have sent Eric on his way tonight with an approved plan.
Only if council refers it to you guys, it's not outright. Jeff just read it.
Councilmember Harrison.
He can still move forward with his plan, it's the fee that he doesn't want to pay, so he could still.
We tabled it.
No, can't do nothing.
So he could still take down the three trees on his property.
Well, three trees with a permit.
Why is he going to do that?
Yeah.
That would cost him more.
I think all the neighbors should take three trees down and be done with it.
Okay, I think we've voted, so Councilman, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, if I, if I could just, it sounds like at the end that there is some discussion, instead of having it first come to council, to then be referred to the Tree Committee, that there might be some language that you would like to have changed. If you'd like, I can work with the attorney to bring that back at our next meeting, so that it.
Yes.
It would first go to the Tree Committee, have a recommendation, and then come before the council. Happy to do that. And, and I'll work with Eric here, I just gave him my business card, and I'll get him connected up with Nick, so that we can get this on our next agenda.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, next on to residential light discussion, from one easy topic to the next. Mr. City Manager, you want to introduce us?
Sure. In our packet tonight on page 78 is, for discussion tonight, is the Light Ordinance Amendment. I'm not going to read through several pages, but we did receive several, you know, comments in the past from some residents. The commercial component went through our Planning Commission last November, it was put on pause during the COVID months, it has since come back. And one particular issue, my understanding, is being worked on with our code enforcement for the commercial side. There was a request at the council level to have this part of the discussion be had at, at council. I'll be recommending, or staff's going to be recommending, that, again, maybe have some information and then refer it back to the, the Planning Commission, so that we can either have both of those go forward. There are really, in the packet, kind of you can do, do nothing, to go with the dark sky or do something in between. We've kind of outlined, and in the packet, there's information kind of on an A, B, C, or D option. For staff to really come up with, you know, a solution, not knowing where council is wanting to go, is, is a bit challenging for us. So tonight, we're hoping that, you know, to kind of do nothing, to go to the complete dark sky. Again, we've provided council with some communities' ordinances that are kind of that A, B, C, or D option. And we're, we're happy to have a conversation. Attorney did include some language in tonight's packet, starting on, I want to say page 80, it's on, actually, page 80, through page 84. So we've got the attorney, myself, as well as other staff on, on Zoom here that are happy to answer questions, but we do need some input from, from council, and there might be, I don't know if the residents have jumped on, but there were at least one resident who had reached out to me prior to this meeting and has called into other meetings regarding this specific topic.
Okay, so is there, Brian, is there somebody, a resident who wants to speak first?
Yes, there's a phone number, I mean, in 202.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, I'm Pat Kane, 817 West Fourth Street.
Pat, welcome.
Oh, welcome again, yes, here I go. I feel like a ping pong ball. This light nuisance, which is what it is, has been going back and forth for quite some time, without anything ever really being hardcore addressed, and it needs to be. Things were taken care of on the multiple family versus residential by, I guess, enforcement, by going out and saying, hey, here's the nuisance you're creating, let's take care of it. And they did comply. But that's multi-family. This is residential to residential single, and here's the difference, or the problem. There is no difference when it is a light nuisance, an unwanted light, an annoyance. The IDS has come up with more and more and more communities in the United States and municipalities, all adopting IDS and DS. And what they've said is, for residential, their words using shall not trespass. The light shall not trespass. And it's so simple, they outline how a resident does it. Change out your light bulb to a much lower wattage or lumens. Redirect your light down to your property where it is needed and not out. Shield the light or get a new fixture. They work, they, and then they give you all kinds of examples. We can't seem to get there. I don't think the public had the opportunity to see the photographs that I have sent multiple times to council and to Planning Commission. So we live not like probably any of you live. And it's getting, it's not getting better, it's not going to get better. Boulder, Colorado, something you should look at. San Bernardino, you should look at it. Ketchum, Idaho, you should look at it. Multiple new municipalities and cities in Pennsylvania just came on. They are getting their certifications and they're not having problems getting compliance. So why should somebody live with spotlights through every single window of their house, illuminating refrigerators, bedrooms, bathrooms, a whole living room, a porch, where you can't sit on the porch? And the very people where the light originates from are all shuttered and closed up. When I've got lights across the street, all through my entire house and going out the backside, that's not appropriate. That's a nuisance. So if we can't take care of it under nuisance, and I will say it, unwanted, multiple studies, everything you're going to find now will tell you, light at night producing this type of glare, taking away privacy, causing visibility problems for the people where the light is for the people where the light is not wanted, which is what happens, interfering with the environment, causing unnecessary light pollution, being where it's not wanted, being an annoyance, physical discomposure, interfering with rest is not right and appropriate. We're working with antiquated languages, believe it or not. Years ago, when this first came up, the study was very incorrect. When I had pointed out to Mr. Kinsepp at the time, who was chair, where the inconsistencies were and where the measurements and how they were taken, and it was decided at that point, the study was no good. We had some volunteers and we asked if we could redo it on the residential because it was important, and the city just said no. So, here we are again. With next door on the one side, anybody falls on my steps because you can't see, and you can't see turning into the driveway when the light hits you right in your eyes. You know what happens? I get sued. You go to that neighbor, they're the problem. They know it. And you know what they'll say? Well, the city says I can do it. When you're overbuilding the way you're overbuilding, I got a garage that's three feet from the property line. Now, come on. You shield the light, you direct it into your own windows maybe, but instead, they remove the lights that would go into their windows. This is not right. We live with the spotlight. We can't have our porch. Why is somebody across the street lighting my whole driveway? I got a 60-foot driveway. Why, why are they illuminating it? That driveway, their lights are for their little 20-foot driveway across a street. Their backyard light should not come all the way through my house, not my back windows. That's what we need to not have. And if you want it to dress under nuisance, then it needs to be enforced. If you want it under the light ordinance, we need to step up with what other communities are doing. I'm hearing it about water. We hear it about planting. We hear it about let's preserve the green. But you're allowing a tremendous amount of light pollution in residential just because some people like a lot of bright lights all night long where all it affects is neighbors, their use and enjoyment of their property, light pollution, the nice guy in the environment, and everything in the environment, from birds to insects, to butterflies, to wildlife, and to people being able to rest comfortably in their own house without spending thousands and thousands of dollars, not only in window coverings, but in air conditioners because you can't have a window open even. So, it's kind of on your plate. I like all these other cities that said shall not trespass. Kim Russell taught me the strong words of shall not and will not, and I'm shocked to see shall not. Their preamble to their ordinances have changed. The language is fabulous for the environment and to protect people's rest, what the night really is, and you can't take residential and turn it into the downtown. Your big bright lights belong commercial, downtown. They don't belong in the neighborhoods. So, I don't know where you're at with this, but I don't want to be the ping pong ball anymore. That's where I'm at. And I feel now just hearing this, oh, it'll go back to planning, it'll go back here. So, do I spend the entire summer with big bright lights through my whole house? I've already got months of it. What, what are, what are we supposed to do and how do we do this? If we're going to keep up on other ordinances, we need to do something about this. This is our environment, and this is quality of life in a neighborhood. And I don't want to be like other people. And I wouldn't move. I, I don't want to be in that point, but I don't know other people who said they will move. They've had it because we're not moving forward in this. We're making it very, very complicated. These other cities, it's very simple. There's no light trespass. Here's how you do it. You're going to fall into compliance, and here are the easiest ways to do it. We need to do it. And I don't know if it's fear that doesn't, and people are afraid to take the, the right stand. Ask my neighbor, what rights does he have to the interior of my house at night to illuminate it or my yard? Who owns my property? And where does he have the right to illuminate it and take the night? Ask him. I'd ask the city that. The way we're measuring is even wrong, and even at Great Oaks, you can't measure necessarily on the ground. These others don't. As a matter of fact, a couple of new cities, you know how they measure light trespass? They use a three-foot yardstick. I love it. A three-foot yardstick. They're looking for a shadow. They're doing it very simple. They're taking the legal aspects out of it, and they're not leaving anything for people to interpret and go round and round and round and round with language, looking for a way that people can get around it and the exceptions. Point blank, I'm living in a city. Yeah, my city address, but I'm residential. And I did not give away my rights here at all, nor does the neighbor have the rights for this type of annoyance that originates by his own hands on his own properties, and that's what we have. So, I don't know what to do. I just know right now that I'm a little irritated about it because it's been so many months, but I've also been up 16 hours today, so I want to wrap this up.
Thank you.
That's good news, right?
Thank you, Pat, for your input.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. On page 102, C at the bottom highlighted, it says glare and light trespass. Exterior lighting sources shall be designed, constructed, located, and maintained in a manner that does not cause off-site glare on neighboring properties or streets right away, street right aways. In general, the hotspot or lighting emitting element of any light fixture shall not be directly visible from a neighboring property as this is the primary cause of glare. Why can't we just add that to our ordinance?
Yes.
Because that's the only thing that we need to do. It's pretty simple. It doesn't get into a whole bunch of discussions or anything. It's just really stated very plain and simple there, that everything shall be designed and constructed and that to take care of that.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, to that point, Councilmember Peterson, I, I would support that, and I think it might appropriately fit in under the residential ordinance. On page 83, exterior lighting in all districts, because it kind of dovetails with exterior lighting shall be arranged as far as practical to reflect light away from any residential use, and in no case shall be more than one foot candle power of light across a lot line, five foot above the ground in a residential district.
Right, but we don't need that. All we need is this here because that just says it shall not, it shall not cause glare on neighboring properties at all. So, if we do the one foot candle to Pat making a comment, that, that won't work because we did that before, and that one, one foot candle is old. The only thing that, that, because we went through this when they, you know, 11 years ago, this lighting thing when it came up. So, the basis of this here that is she's trying to protect for everybody on their own property is that glare does not show up on trespass onto the property. That's it. Doesn't have to be anything else. It just should not, it should not trespass. And if we just inserted this here and had that in our ordinance, that would cause, that would take care of every issue that we have, plain and simple. Doesn't matter where it's at.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Yes, I, I support that recommendation. And then my other thought on lighting is, you know, really what has also brought to my thoughts on lighting is the change to LED lights and how, you know, we've gone from warm to cool light, and that just changes the dynamics of lighting. And I don't see our ordinances addressing that. I know we experienced that as a city when we changed some of our streets to that cool LED. I've also seen it in a newer business in town that the very bright, cool LED lights, to me, sends a message that, hey, is this not safe here? And I don't think that's the intent. So, I think, you know, lights like that need to be toned down. So, I don't know how to change the wording in the ordinance to do that, but that is my concern.
Councilmember Bavacqua.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about also the five foot from the lot line issue, and that, that's alluded to, I think, by Pat as well. Great Oaks, particularly, five feet away from the lot line in many cases is blocked by carports from the, from the neighboring property. So, it's dark and shady there, but not in your bedroom. So, some of this, that's why those things cause issues because you do the measurement at five feet, and hey, it's compliant. So.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Councilmember Peterson, I was trying to follow with you. Are you talking about, when you were referencing that, I was on page 102, but on mine it's on 103. Are you under section 18.05 exterior lighting A? Was that what you were reading?
No, it's on page 102. It's from Rochester Hills. It's Rochester Hills, page 102.
I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at the packet that we received.
Yeah, this is the council packet.
Don't see that.
Which section?
It says at the very top, Rochester Hills, Chapter 2, Exterior Lighting, General Provisions, Purpose, Article 10, has the purpose of it, and it goes into the general provisions, and then it's highlighted, number C. And the bottom of that page says 100, but the page of the packet is 102.
Okay, now, now, now I read it. Okay. I just.
Oh, I, I was reading the page of the packet because that coincides with the table of contents.
Because I was reading, and I see what you, what you're reading now, and then I, I was looking at, sorry, Mayor, on page, my page 103, which is the Northville, Section 18.05, had a very similar kind of thing. All external lights, including parking area lighting, building lighting, and lighting for signs, awnings, and canopy shall be shielded or otherwise positions that the source of light does not adversely, adversely affect driver or pedestrian visibility and does not adversely affect adjacent properties. So, I think between this one and what you're.
That was a commercial, and this one's, other one's residential, and they would both be good to be in the ordinance that way to address what Mayor Protem was just speaking of as well. And, and those two things would actually cover everything that we need to take care of.
I'm, I'm supporting, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
No, that's fine.
We're not on the same page, but we, we are on the same page in terms of what you're suggesting.
And a comment regarding the five feet, though, because now we are, our minimum lot spaces are three feet, so, and that five foot wouldn't work for anything either. So, I think just having it generic like this here is enforceable, and that is something that the city would then have to attend to, and we don't need to really do any more discussion on this because this actually takes care of it from all standpoints.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I'm too in support of that. But, back to the cover letter to this, this discussion, one of the questions that administration has is how we are going to enforce this. So, maybe I want to start with, as a violator of this ordinance, what is the next step in the process? They are notified by the city, right, that they're not in compliance with an ordinance. If they don't comply, what's the next step after that? Typically, I think they're, so they get the notice to comply. Right. They have a certain amount of days, and Attorney Kratos, I'm trying to think, 10, 10 days, unless you, to comply. If they don't reach compliance, we reach out one more time, and then normally a ticket's issued. You know, they can still come in compliance, and then we can either cancel the ticket. If they don't pay the ticket, then they're, they're taken to court to get compliance. So, would, would be, would council be considerate of looking at those remedies in addition to, as they attach to this ordinance? I mean, are they enough to allow for compliance? I mean, I don't know. What is the ticket fine for? Jeff, is it $100?
Mr. City Attorney, you got a comment?
I have a lot of comments, but.
On this subject?
Oh, on this one. So, well, yeah. So, if it's, it's found to be a violation of the ordinance, then it's, if it's not specifically provided for as a civil infraction, it's actually a misdemeanor punishable by up to 90 days in jail, up to $500 in fines.
And everyone gets a warning first, right?
Right.
Yeah, and they're 10 days to comply.
May I speak to that point, Mr. Mayor? So, you know, these, these lighting standards are in the zoning ordinance. And so, we, you know, part of the enforcement issue is that if, if you enacted that exempt lighting situation where there, no light can spill across the line, you're going to have thousands of non-compliant lights in the city. Every neighborhood is going to be non-compliant. So, one of the things that, that's, one of the things that, it's not just as simple as putting the words in because what do you do with the, the ones that aren't? Because they were there before you would make that change, right? So, that, that's a concern to me. I, I mean, you can give a notice tomorrow of a violation, but, you know, if that light was there before, it was, it was, it was a problem. I mean, that's, and that's where the fire chief and we've all talked about for, for years now is, how do you enforce something? If you put it in new, then are you going to figure out a way, have like a sunset clause on, on existing lights that, that everyone has to change out or to darken the panel that's facing? You know, you, you've got to think of that next step, which is, you know, what are you going to do with the thousands of lights that would automatically be in violation of this ordinance? And I would say that the, the ordinance that you, you mentioned from Rochester Hills, a couple sections further, it actually exempts the residential lighting from that provision. So, it's, you know, that, that's, well, that, that, those words are, you know, the, the glare and light trespass, which you mentioned, Rochester Hills, they actually exempt residential lighting from that, from that requirement. So, now, it does allow that the zoning administrator, I don't know who that is for them, but, you know, they can take steps to minimize glare and light trespass if it's determined to be to protect housing. So, it gives some administrator there the ability to work with the offending light owner.
Resident.
But, you know, they specifically exempts residential lighting. So, I'm not saying you have to follow Rochester Hills, but just know that they've carved that out already.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Peterson.
Okay, so, the whole world's on energy saving, efficiency, et cetera. We talk about water tonight, about saving water and everything else. And this is also an energy saving type of thing also, depending on like what type of light they actually put in. So, if we were to enact this, can't we give everybody a year to like comply and change that to where we are in a better position moving forward? You know, and the hard part's going to be even with the tree gentleman tonight. They moved to our area. Nobody knows our ordinances. You know, it's not plastered out on a big sign flashing billboard out there for people to know what to happen. And it's going to be, our job is stated earlier, that we have to do a very good job at letting people know so people aren't in violation. And you get a neighbor or somebody who files a complaint and they don't know, and then it causes issues. We don't want the issues. We want just to have a nice, quiet, peaceful neighborhood always. So, I still think that something should be in the ordinance to address this, and as simple as that is stated, I, I don't know why they would put this in here and not really separate it from out and then throw it down there that it's exempt from residential, when that is probably one of the biggest things because we have ton of regulation regarding commercial. Like, you have to have them all pointed directly down. You can't do certain things, and they all have to be a certain type. So, I think that for us to move forward in the community based on the energy uses and everything else, to just being greener all, all around, that we need to actually insert this in somehow. And Mayor, why don't you start a light subcommittee so they can discuss it more?
I thought you said you don't like committees.
I don't. I was being sarcastic because I think it's pretty simple that we, we just put something in there and we give people time to be able to adjust to this, you know? I, I do. I think that we have to address this. We should not have people coming to our, to our council meetings for years discussing the same thing and not taking action.
Councilmember Bavacqua.
Yeah, and I, I just like to say, I don't think that we should, you know, be fearful of changing the ordinance based on creating, you know, non-conformity. Sometimes it's the right thing to do. You have to just work your way through that process. Also tend to think that, once you put something on the books like, you know, Councilmember Peterson's suggestion would be, you may not see that many complaints come to, come to the city calling out of that ordinance. That, that, it's something that over time would change as people come in and, and they put in new houses and they, and they are required to put in the proper lighting, then that would just change over time. And the rest of it, if people are fine with the light that's blaring into their houses, then they're going to be fine with it after the ordinance changes. But those that have the concern and have, as Ms. Kane has mentioned, the, the right to their, to their property and, and the enjoyment of that property, they would have an option. So, that's my thought.
So, so does, Councilmember Peterson?
No, I'd just like to make a motion that we put this into, into our ordinance. And I would like it separated with the commercials aspect and the residential aspect.
So, there's a motion by Councilmember Peterson. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may.
Mr. City Manager, or City Attorney?
So, this is a zoning ordinance.
Yep.
So, this has to go through Planning Commission first.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that it goes to Planning.
Send it to Planning Commission.
Correct.
Send it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Support by Councilmember Bavacqua to send this to Planning Commission. Councilmember Harrison, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like, I, I guess to, to bring this to everyone's attention to consider, especially as it goes in front of Planning Commission, this ordinance. I feel for Ms. Kane, that has to be so frustrating to be dealing with glare. I want to worry and, and maybe channel former Mayor Protem Russell. There's unintended, unintended consequences to things, and I'd like Planning Commission to think about the safety. We're so privileged to live in such a safe community where I can walk my dog at night without fear, but part of that is because of the light we have in our. But part of that is because of the light we have in our community. And as a like a young woman, I'm always walking through parking lots with my keys in my hands because that's what we're taught to do. And because it's it can be dangerous when you're not in a well lit area as, you know, a female. So please to keep that in mind, that the safety of all of our residents, you know, needs to be considered when making these decisions.
Very good point. Thank you.
Bullshit.
Okay, Pat, you need to not comment. We're hearing.
You're not on mute.
You're not on mute. We're hearing things you probably shouldn't be saying. Thank you. Further discussion?
I do. Yeah, I do because there are there are two separate discussions here. One is regarding the commercial piece, which that has its own regulations to begin with. So and also the street right of ways, that is also separate when at the intersections of all the streets. But I have noticed because I'm a late walker as well, that, you know, these new lights do not light up as well as they used to, okay, on most of our city blocks, which is fine, getting used to it. But this is actually really specifically to neighboring properties of residential. This piece here, so when we take it back to planning, that they look at it from all three aspects. The city lighting, because even the lamp post on University glaring to everyone's bedroom windows too there, you know, so we have three different areas that we need to make sure we address separately to take care of this here for the future.
Very good. Mr. City Manager?
Hi. Hello.
I hope someone's calling.
Is there another Brian, is there another call or is that Ms. Kane?
There's another call. I don't see the hand up though. It's for ending in 651.
Hi, this is Jane Turner.
Hi, Jane.
Welcome, Ms. Turner.
I would like to support Pat's thing. I have noticed that Village Green has, is it true that they've regulated their lighting?
I don't know.
Probably.
Because I don't think so.
It's commercial.
Well, their lighting used to shine through my kitchen window, through the dining room, through the hallway, right into my bedroom, and I haven't noticed it lately. It was mostly in the fall after the leaves fell. And I didn't notice it. So I'm thinking they have complied. But I have had neighbors have a floodlight on their garage that they left going 24/7 and it shined into my bedroom. I have blackout curtains in there and it still affected me. So we have to address residential. I'm not in one of the towering new houses that are, and I luckily so far have not had any of those around me, but I think it definitely needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the-
If I if I could, Mayor, just understand if enforcement would be by complaint driven or is this gonna, I guess, have me have staff out at the night actually looking for issues?
Well, I mean, I guess that's something that would be looked at by Planning Commission, but I would I would think complaint driven.
Okay. That's helpful for the feedback for us when we're drafting it for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
So there's a motion on the table, so Madam Clerk, the role, please.
There is, and the person that made it is stepped out. I don't know how that works with minutes as far as her not being making the motion but then being absent for the vote, so I want to take a reason.
I didn't know that was an issue.
Yeah.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want to weigh in on that?
I I don't believe it's a problem to proceed, although if it's going to be close, I don't believe it's going to be close. It's probably a six zero.
So Madam Clerk, the role, please.
All right, very good. Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
That will get sent to the Planning Commission.
Excuse me?
Ms. Turner, yes?
Hello, how do I unmute?
You are unmuted.
I want to stay on the line, but how do I unmute?
She wants to mute.
I can mute you.
I'll mute you. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Okay, next, we have a review of proposal to begin, a comfort dog program in the police department. I think we have the police chief here. Would you like to present?
Yes, thank you very much. We're very excited to present really two programs that are extend our community outreach to benefit our residents in a number of ways. The first would be the comfort dog program, sometimes known as a therapy dog. These words are sometimes used interchangeably. Our proposal is is to take advantage of a opportunity that where Officer Dramer has reached out to Michigan Doodle Rescue and they have provided us with the opportunity to provide not only the dog, but basically all of the supporting items such as food and veterinary bills and and all of those things to really make this program run at a very low, low cost to to the police department in the city. We've also made arrangements through custom dog training to provide the training that would be necessary in order to certify the dog as a comfort dog to work in the community. If you look at comfort dogs, I think it's something that's pretty common if you think of nursing homes, hospitals, they're used in schools and in libraries. But this is something that's come before in a number of police departments, not only around the country, but in our area. We looked at Saginaw, the kind of Sheriff's Office in Birmingham are also departments that have comfort dogs in their departments. We think there's a number of areas where this this could be beneficial, certainly in the schools with Officer Dramer and her job as a school liaison officer is a certainly a continuing way to reach out to to the students and kind of break down stereotypes that exist between police officers and students. We look at being able to use this in situations such as child abuse cases, domestic violence cases, areas where there's some type of critical incident where the calming effect of a dog can be helpful to those that were involved, in particular children. And we look at it as a benefit, you know, not only to just to the members of our own department to have that around. Police work is a very stressful occupation. We've had situations here where we've completed a critical incident stress due briefing based on the impact of an event that we recently had here. And certainly having a comfort dog here, I think, would be very beneficial for the members of the department and their own mental health to be a benefit to them. As far as costs or ongoing costs here, the cost that would be the department would incur would be just some improvements in the patrol car assigned Officer Dramer from safety standpoint so that we had the same equipment in the car that sounds an alarm, just like you do for Kit and Pearl, so that if the engine were to quit and the dog is in the car and overheats, it would roll down the windows and signal to the officer and to those around that there was a problem. So I think it's, you know, it's a great opportunity that we have. Officer Dramer has made, reached out to these folks that are willing to assist us in in this endeavor. And I think it's a would be a great addition to the police department and to the community to be able to provide a comfort dog to support in our community outreach role in the community. I certainly stand ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. That was a great presentation. I have a therapy dog. My dog is therapy dog certified, so I've seen firsthand the impact that they can have when they're in the community. I really miss volunteering with her. So I and I've also seen the benefits through Oakland County. They have a therapy support dog as well on their team. And I think that the benefits, it's more of just support, but really a community outreach effort to to, as Chief said, to build those bridges in the community. So I'd like to make a motion to support the development of a comfort dog program to benefit the police department, Rochester Community Schools, and the community at large.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Harrison, support by Councilmember Peterson. Is there discussion? Councilmember Bavacqua.
Yeah, I I support this. I just I'm afraid at some point we may have more dogs than police at the station, which would not be a bad thing, in my opinion. But and I I hope to see the the new dog, if this passes, at the the dog wash on July 17th that we're putting on at the beautiful commission, which is going to be right across there for a street from the from the police station, so.
You had Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. And Chief, I would like to really thank Officer Dramer for bringing this forward. She is probably one of the most, I mean, you have an incredible staff, but she's really good and I'm really glad that she reached out to do this program and to bring it here. And from working in the schools, I think this is going to help the community overall a lot. And I appreciate the work that they did in, you know, making sure that the cost is limited and all of that. But I think this is a great, great, great thing to have for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just like to add, they have this in the Waterford schools and it seems to be a popular thing and, you know, anxiety and all that is is obviously a big issue, especially with the pandemic. So I'm in favor of it. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. Next is a review of the proposal to set up the free refrigerator food donation program facilitated by the police department. Chief?
Yes, this is second community outreach program this evening. Thank you very much for your support on the comfort dog. This concept is something that's gaining around the country to provide a location for cool products to be able to be set out by donated by residents. And we would set up this refrigerator adjacent to our Sallyport area here at the police department and folks would be able to partake of things that were left there for them to use. The police department would be monitoring it to make sure that items there are safe, they're sealed, they're they're, you know, there'd be kind of a list of rules there. Every good program has to have their rules. But we would, we went on to make sure that we would have our community, those that that need a little extra hand, would have the benefit to be able to pick up refrigerator goods around the clock, milk, cheese, produce and things of that nature that would be placed there by concerned citizens. We and the police department primarily, we've reached out to the neighborhood house food pantry and spoke with them about it, just to make sure that it was a concept that they believed in and they also supported, you know, more than area to be out there and help our residents in need. We have had some experience with this, actually going out and facilitating the getting food out to some of our challenged residents. And there certainly is a need in the community for this type of thing. And we have sufficient funds in our community outreach budget to fund this project. And we've also received word that, and we met today with Bob Bloomingdale, who's willing to help us with building a little structure around it so that it's safe from the elements and will be accessible and look good in years to come.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Like the other one, this is motherhood and apple pie. I think this is a, I just wanted to commend the write up that came in our package, the and you touched on it, Chief, one that it'll be funded, the concrete panel will be funded by the community engagement line item. Bloomingdale Homes will provide the shelter and, you know, we're fortunate to live in a community, but there are people in our community, as we know from Meals on Wheels and all the other work that's done by some of the the food pantries and everything else, that this is a need we have. And I couldn't think of a better place to have this than outside the police department. I think it'll be very safe there. So I'd like to make a motion to support the free G concept as presented that continues to extend the community policy program to the community we serve. And again, thank you to Officer Dramer for bringing this to our attention.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you, Chief, for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Next is consideration of award of a contract for the 2021 storm and sanitary CCTV program with possible extensions. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I know our engineers, Aseel Putrus, from AEW is on here and I can't quite tell if Jeremy or Assistant Public Works Director is on here as well to answer some questions, but just want to bring this item up and hopefully get approval for award of the storm and sanitary sewer CCTV. This is a project that we've gone out for request for proposal, received various bids. The lowest ones that's in our packet, sorry, on page 119, the bid review is on page 121. There were five different companies and the lowest qualified bidder is DVM Utilities Inc. in the amount of 121,48750 for the first year. This is actually below the anticipated budgeted price. As it came in at a good number, our engineers reached out to them to see with a consumer price index or CPI adjustment for the possibility of extending it for up to three more years beyond that. So tonight's staff is requesting award of contract to DVM Utility Inc. in the amount of 121,48750 for the initial year with the options for up to three years beyond that with a price adjustment based on the consumer price index if deemed appropriate.
Councilmember Peterson?
Quick question. So I I recall when our past EPW director was here that we actually had televised all the lines, correct?
That's incorrect. We're about 50% done.
50%?
Yep, so we have a plan that we've gone over, I guess, and I'm happy to go over it in the future, again, to show over the next, I think it's three to five years, to get to 100%.
Okay, so why does it take so long, though?
Just normally it's the full cost and the actual time of actually going through both the sewer and then also the storm.
Oh, doing, I see. Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion to approve this so it can get started.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support. Support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion, Mayor Protem, Salvia.
Thank you. This question's directed for Aseel. Aseel, since DVM is the low bidder, do you have experience working with them or do we have references on them?
Yeah, I personally have worked with them recently in Shelby Township.
Can you speak up, please?
Aseel, can you speak up?
Uh, can you hear me?
Very, just barely, very brief, like lightly.
How about now?
Better, a little bit better.
How about now? Okay, so I personally worked with them in Shelby Township for a project that we saw they'd done last year. And then our company, we represent three two communities. They recently worked in Atlantic Township and Oklahoma Township and they're both happy with their work. So we know them very well. They're capable of doing the work.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. Now to receive reports from various boards and commission. First, a report from the OPC. Mayor Protem, Salvia.
Yes, thank you. So the OPC last board meeting, the end of May, we had the first review of the 2022-2024 budget, which will be reviewed again at, this is June, at the June meeting, so we'll be coming to council after that. It is a conservative budget, baseline only, you know, with some inflation rates in it. It does maintain their, actually, they're at 75% of expenditures in the fund balance for all three years. The policy is 25%. They did recently pull out, this is an interesting fact, on how cost effective the OPC has been run. Back in 2001, there was an audit and the costs over the past 20 years- run. Back in 2001, there was an audit, and the costs over the past 20 years have only increased by less than 1%. So very cost-efficient, as well as increased services over those 20 years. So just a nice checkpoint to see how well it's being managed. They have just finished a membership drive. 300 new members have joined the OPC in the past month. Another interesting fact, they're converting the store, the market that's in the OPC, from just a unique items to an artisan market. So things made by the participants at the OPC. So I think that'll be pretty cool. And then lastly, like every place, they really need staff. So they're doing everything they can, appealing to their fans, but their main need is they need lifeguards. People want to be swimming at night at the OPC, and they don't have enough lifeguards. So you'll see signs out. They're really looking for lifeguards. So ask your friends, your neighbors. We need lifeguards at the OPC.
Very good. And I might add that the Monday 12:30 Bridge game is back on. So that's a very important thing, too, from what I hear. Next, receive report from the Planning Commission. Councilmember Bavacqua.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We only had a couple items on the agenda. First one was a project on 407 South Main Street. It's a second-floor residential above a retail location. That was approved and is moving forward. The other one was the North Main Project, that's the brownstones on the west side of the street, 1205 North Main. They had to come back in front of Planning Commission because there was something found in the building code that the plans did not comply with. Couple of buildings needed to be shifted a foot or two, and it really didn't impact anything else on the site plan. So that adjustment was approved, and it's moving forward. And I think he said he's breaking ground very soon. So it'll be nice to see that project finally get underway. And that was it.
Very good. Thank you. Next is a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a successful meeting. Some of the same updates I've already provided, the wings are up in the parking structure. They are vinyl wings, so they will be taken down. We're looking at doing a ribbon cutting for the Municipal Park Butterfly Garden expansion. I know that Colin's been working, and the team have been working really hard to get that finished. We have selected an artist for the mural on the GBB building, and we will have a rendering done that council and the public can make suggestions on. We're going to post it publicly. We have suggestions for native plant planters that will go outside of the GBB building. And of course, we have, as Councilmember Bavacqua mentioned, our dog wash fundraiser coming up on July 17th. That is a live event on Facebook, so I'd like to ask my fellow members to please share and post, if you can. And we also have a new Adopt a Butterfly program that's a digital initiative, where you can symbolically adopt a butterfly. We had a nomination for our Quarterly Good Neighbor Award, so we will be recognizing them at an upcoming meeting. And that was all.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson?
For the public, can we just spell out what GBB is, so they know what building that is?
I'm not sure what that stands for.
Gray block building.
Okay, I know, but how would the people know when we're talking about it, where there's going to be a mural?
Sure. I think once it's there, we'll add it to our map.
It's in the municipal park.
No, it's okay. I just said-
For the public.
Yeah, right.
Very good. Thank you. Next, your report from Rara. I think we kind of got a report.
Yeah.
But Mr. Albrecht?
There was no meeting. We didn't have quorum, because the board had not adapted quickly enough to meeting in person. So there was no June meeting.
Very good. Next, onto new business for referral and miscellaneous. Brian, are there any other public comments?
I am seeing, actually, I see the phone number 202 has their hand up again.
Okay, is that Mr. Kane?
Can I talk now?
Yes.
It's Pat Kane, 817 West Fourth. Hello?
Go ahead, Pat. Yep, you're on.
Okay, first of all, my apologies to all of you, but in particular to Councilmember Harrison, because I used the BS word. But I was sitting here, I didn't know I was not muted. And I'll be honest with you, I got frustrated. So I do owe that apology. But I got frustrated because I thought everything was going to derail, because I'm talking residential to residential, and every time the discussions have come up, they've been muddled with commercial, multifamily, and then parking lots and safety, which this has absolutely nothing to do with. And there's where my frustration boiled over. I don't know when it goes to zoning or planning, how fast it's going to get on planning as agenda. And I also know that it has to come back, I believe, to city council, which tells me I will be all summer, like I've been since December, in the same situation, while everybody else can maybe have a window open. And after getting a bill for $1,045 for three small windows, for room darkening, and that's just three small windows, I will still not have the use of my porch. We still will have lights all in our yard, illuminating our house and our yard. And we're not going to be able to have a window open. And that's only three windows, $1,045. So my neighbors were all right when they told me how expensive it is, and how their tolerance level two is spilling over. So just so you know, my apologies. I take responsibility, and I'm awfully sorry for it, but I didn't want it to get muddled with things that this was not about. That's all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, thank you. Check register reports in the packet are for May 27th, June 6th, and June 10th. As for the manager updates, just want to highlight again, and it's also on the city's website, our most recent water report, so the water quality report has been posted to our website. It was also linked in our local newspaper, The Post, and there'll be a brief information in our upcoming summer newsletter. Besides that, I do want to note that on June 28th at 6:30, just prior to our next council meeting, we'll be having a brief ceremony to dedicate our newest ambulance. It will be out here in the parking lot right behind here, the council chambers. So we'll have a brief ceremony, probably about, you know, we'll end about 15 minutes before our actual council meeting at 7:00. We'll have more information for council and also posted on our website and through social media. That's all I have.
Good, thank you.
Excuse me?
Ms. Turner?
Hello?
Yes, did you have a comment?
Yes, it's me again. Sorry, it's hard to regulate when I can come in. I have a few more public comments to make.
Okay. Go ahead.
Why do I have to complain every year about the weed ordinance? My, I have neighbors on three sides of me that do not take care of their weeds, one behind the shed, one in the entire yard, and then I have the good old water tower property. I spent a lot of money this year putting new grass in my backyard because the weeds were overtaking them. I don't want to spend that money again. I know I'm supposed to call the fire department and go through all this whole rigamarole, but why can't we just take care of the weeds to begin with? This is becoming really annoying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, those are always difficult, neighbor-to-neighbor things are always pretty difficult. Thank you.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
But why don't we find these people to begin with, especially the city of Rochester, who is in charge of the water tower property? I shouldn't have to do that every year.
Mayor, I'm happy to talk with our Parks Department and ensure that our water tower property is on a normal rotation for having the lawn cut that's over there. As for the residents-
The lawn is cut. It's the weeds along the fence line.
Okay, and that they're weed-whipped as well along the fence line.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, anything tonight?
Nothing, thank you.
Madam Clerk? Councilmember Sage?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes, I have a few things, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to thank city administration for the Memorial Day ceremony that we had. It was very beautiful and well-done. I attended the OPC walk for Meals on Wheels, and I had a lot of fun participating in that, and it seemed like they had a great turnout. So I want to encourage everybody to go out to that again next year. The master planning workshop that the city hosted was very successful. I had the privilege of having one of our community's developers in the meeting. So that was an interesting conversation to have between him and the public about what they would like to see on these properties and what will actually happen. So that dichotomy was interesting. And then lastly, I'd like to say thank you to our Parks Department for the welcome sign plantings. They look really beautiful.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Ah, thank you. I know this is going to be kind of funny, but the splash pads are open in Shelby Township and Rochester Hills now. So if we were to, I mean, it's kind of important for the people that need to know. But I think we need to get some plans in place so we can actually do these projects as well. But, and we can't get grant money until we have these plans and projects on paper, ready to go. That was the purpose of bringing it up tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia?
Thank you. You know, I think that might prompt me just to tag on to the parks topic. So I've had several new, our neighborhood is turning over, and it's got a lot more young families. And so they're asking, where is the closest playground equipment? And Elizabeth Park could be the closest area that could be walked from our association. So I know we've just gotten a grant for playground equipment in the park, working on that. But boy, it would be nice to have some playground equipment for the families in, you know, that section of town. Other than that, from an infrastructure update, city manager noted for us that Oakhamahaffey construction project is starting, as well as, hopefully by next week, we will finish South Street. So the water main with the increased capacity. So those connections will be going through next weekend. So just a question for city manager, any feedback from the businesses along there on how the project's been going?
Unfortunately, yes, we've had some feedback. But I think we've been able to address all their concerns and issues. So they're hopeful that, you know, the city will find some resources to actually pave the street. That seems to be the biggest comment at this point. You know, we did have to do a lot of exploration. Unfortunately, the lines and utilities were not located in all the spots that our previous engineers had indicated through their drawings. So we did have a few issues, as they've hit the water main a couple times when they were going through to replace. They did hit a gas line, so we had to have that addressed. So all those things, you know, added to the time of the project. However, we're still on target, and now getting towards the restoration. However, doing that exploration did cause, you know, the contractor to dig up the road in other places so that they would be safer for them. Again, they're not trying to hit any of the utilities, the gas or electric or cable or other infrastructure, as well as, or hit the water line that they're trying to replace to cause any disruption. So they've minimized, and our water foreman's actually been on site anytime we've had any of these issues, and has been in contact with myself and the rest of our public work staff. So due to these issues that they've encountered, we've had several complaints, but I think we've been able to resolve all of them at this point. It's just the request to have, you know, the road redone. As I've come to council before, that overall cost would be close to $3 million. So I'm getting a quote to actually have it, what we, similar to what we've done over on Letica, is do the mill and fill, and see if we can actually kind of cap it with a couple inches. That's also a challenge for that road, as we have a lot of semi trucks, so heavy traffic. So it would actually have to be more than just the standard two inches to get a few years' worth of life, as we're trying to locate funds to actually do a full reconstruct of that area. So we have had feedback, and I think we've been able to work through any of the issues that we've encountered. And that part of the project is just about complete.
Thank you. And then, Mayor, did we have another agenda item regarding the Mittelfeld lot?
I didn't see it on my-
I don't think it made it to the-
Okay, so it did not make it to the-
Yeah, no, that was in our packet for information, and that can actually be coming forward. So I know there's been a few questions in our finance, I think it might have been you or another council member that had some questions that hopefully our finance director has gotten back to you on. But I think that would be for our upcoming agenda.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Bavacqua?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I know it's a long meeting, three quick things. One, the memorial for Sue Ann Douglas, I know that we had a reminder put on our plate where we're sitting tonight, is getting this Wednesday. It's from 2:00 to 5:00, but I called the person who's putting it on today, and I told her I would share this at the meeting, because I wasn't going to be there all three hours. So I said, when would be best to be there? She said she's probably going to break at 3:00 to have some remarks made. So those of you who are coming or people are listening, you know, trying to get there before 3:00 to hear the remarks. But the memorial for her will go from 2:00 to 5:00. And again, it's at the River Crest Bank facility. So hopefully, we can go there and pay Sue Ann the proper respect she deserves. Secondly, our own Mayor Bixson was in a magazine called Stony Creek Living. I know some of you who don't live in the area don't have that. So if you want me to send you the article, I did take pictures of each page, and I can send it to you. And I think the magazine just goes to us Gleewa customers. But it was a nice article about the mayor and his wife. And then lastly, I've mentioned this to both city manager, Wing, and to Mayor a few weeks ago. As we emerged from the pandemic last, you know, normally in December, we would have our council meeting, we would go out for some, a social event.
I was going to bring that up, too. But yeah, go ahead. But I have the time and stuff.
Okay, then if the mayor's going to talk about it, I will. It should come from the mayor. Thank you.
That's fine.
That's it.
Anything else? All good? All right, thanks. So, yeah, so Councilmember Albrecht brought it up, and talking with some other people, we usually have a little kind of celebration after our last meeting in December to celebrate all the hard work the council's done and administration's done. And so obviously, that didn't happen this year because of COVID. Now that we're coming out of that, so we're looking at the next city council meeting, June 28th, if everybody can leave a little time afterwards. Hopefully, we'll have a short meeting, or shorter meeting, so that we can all get together, and we'll give you more details about that. But, you know, it's been a long year for everybody, and I know the council and administration did a lot of great work and a lot of things. So we're going to do that then. Then the other thing I just want to give a shout out to, the trailway, they had the county horse patrol out this weekend, and I think that's just a nice thing. Kids like it, and it's, you know, also patrolling the park and stuff. So again, a real sign that our area's coming back, and we're coming back from COVID and that. So that was great to see. So again, thank you, everybody, for coming back. The plan is we're going to be down here for a little longer until the CDC says that all restrictions are off. Then we'll probably be back up on the daisies with a little more, probably the city manager and the city clerk and the city attorney not sitting up there. So we're not as close to what it used to be, because you really, we never realized how close we really all were in the past. That's all I have. Councilmember Sage, you had a comment?
Just a quick one. Wanted to piggyback off something you said about the trail, and maybe it's more of a question to city administration. Do we have some timing for the planting of the trees at the Dilman and Upden property? Nick, are you there? For the plant, the question was for the planting of the trees?
Watching the weather. It's been too hot to plant them. So we get a little break here. They're ordered, we have them tagged. So it could be anytime, as long as we don't have a prolonged hot spell. It's going to be hard to keep them water, and we'll bag them. But should we soon?
So on the third time that I asked this, will I be able to get a date? This is the second. So on the third time I ask, will I be able to get a date?
The nursery, the nursery is the one that has to warrant, you know. They won't put them in. Not appropriate. They're not going to buy them and have them die. So it's very hard to keep them. You usually don't plant past June. So it's up to Sherman's Nursery. It's just been too hot. We haven't planted our street trees yet either because of that, because they have to guarantee them for a year. And they want to make sure they get a fair- get a fair chance to start. So hopefully, I can't give you an exact date.
Okay.
You just got to watch the weather. We're cognizant of it.
So, and then, Sher, did you have a comment? If you did, you need to come up to the...
I know it's been a hard time. Really tough. Yeah, my name is Frank McFarlane. I live at 331 Drace. I've lived in the city for about three years. Prior to that, was 23 years out in Oakland Township and everything. Actually, you touched upon a couple of points I wanted to bring up. One is the trees and the beautification, that kind of thing, and also the safety issue. And I don't understand, especially with this light issue, why does the issue have to come to this forum where you have to just have people be nice to each other? I mean, I don't want a light, you know. My issue is, is, and I think this maybe goes to the city attorney, two items. Number one, residents seem to take the liberty of taking stuff on their property and pushing it onto the street. Snow is an example. Grass is an example. Leaves, I understand the city's got a process to take care of that. Secondly, is garbage cans. My garbage pickup is on Thursday morning. I have neighbors that bring out their garbage cans at 9:00 Wednesday. Some don't get picked up or taken back until the weekend. Looks like I live in the hood. And I wondered, is there some ordinance on these two items? I think the law states you can't take the snow and throw it from your driveway and put it on the street. I think. I don't know. You're the lawyer, I'm not. Is there any ordinance that we can put in place for this?
I think for trash, you're supposed to not put it out till 4:00 on the night before. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact time. I don't know, Jeff, if you have the exact time, but it's the evening before. I want to say it's between 4:00 and 6:00, and then it has to be removed after the pickup, I think, by the next, you know, during that day for the pickup, I think by...
Oh, like 6:00.
Yeah.
Sunday.
That day, that day.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. That's not happening. So how do we...
Well, I do know that the fire department has addressed a number of those, so if you have a specific area you might want to contact the fire department.
Contact the fire department?
Yes. Yeah, they do the code enforcement.
Because I've taken the garbage can and put it right in the guy's middle of his driveway, because, I mean, you live with it. I don't want to live with it, you know.
And I don't know specifically about, I mean, the snow in the street. I know that's no one ever wants in the street. So, but I don't know if there's a specific code that says you can't.
Yeah, because I know the city, I hear their trucks at 5:00 in the morning, they come plowing on down the street. I mean, they do a really good job. And then they got people that throw the snow back on the street again. So that was my issue.
Yeah, they're probably not supposed to do that.
Not supposed to. They're not supposed to shine a light in the bed either. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.